Alrighty folks, we have all board members now in attendance. It's 5:36, we'll go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and I'm gonna ask our special guest today, Mr. Dennis Mobley, to lead us in the pledge. And for those of you that don't know, he is also a longtime Rialto Unified School Board Member, retired. Thank you, sir. We'll move on to 1.3, Approval of the Agenda.
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second. Any discussion? Alright, there's no discussion, hearing none. We'll go ahead and vote.
Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Alright, motion carries. We will move on to 2.0, Public Comments, but before we get that, I'm gonna turn this over to our San Bernardino County Superintendent Schools Legislative Expert, Mr. Dennis Mobley. Welcome.
Thank you, President Wyatt, members of the Board. My name is Dennis Mobley. I'm a Governance Consultant with San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools. I was asked by the District as a neutral party to assist the Board with the process of filling the Board vacancy. As was mentioned, I myself am a former School Board Member. I served 21 years on the Rialto School Board. I worked with your local Board, with the local Board and staff, to assist in developing the process at the last meeting that is fair and respectful to all candidates. To this end, I met with the candidates earlier this evening for a mandatory orientation and to answer questions and to draw lots to determine the order of interview. The remaining, the candidates will be sequestered in a separate room until he or she is called for the interview. While sequestered, candidates may not view the live stream or proceedings of the meeting. After the interview, candidates may remain in the Boardroom. Candidates are aware that they are limited to 15 minutes for an opening statement and to answer six questions, one from each School Board Member. These questions were provided to the candidates during the orientation and were developed by the Board with the concurrence of the Board prior to tonight's meeting. Therefore, with, we actually had 10 candidates, but one did not show, so there are nine that were part of the orientation and will be part of the interview process this evening. I believe you have a list of the candidates and the order in which was determined by the drawing, and that will be the order that they will be called in after public comments. When all interviews are finished, the Board enters into deliberation. Again, the candidates are present, this is open meeting, and with the deliberation, take action to a point. All deliberations are conducted in open session, there are no secret ballots and no sidebar discussions. I recommend that Board Members make general comments after the interviews, just to reflect on what was said, thank candidates for interest in serving. Again, the orientation time, I think you have a good group of people from which to choose a candidate, and I have every confidence that you will be able to move to an appointment this evening. After all six Board Members have spoken, the Board may consider action to name an individual. We were gonna, as you make comments about your reflection, I would also ask that you maybe identify maybe two or possibly three candidates that kind of stand out above, in your own opinion, and staff will capture those on the screen. Again, after all six Board Members have had a chance to comment, there may be a pattern that emerges, and during that time, after that time, then the Board can entertain a motion and a second to make an appointment. It takes four votes to appoint, and the Board may take multiple rounds of voting to make an appointment. The Board may also consider a prior candidate, if you've done several rounds. I would recommend, however, that you do not follow the model of our recent House of Representatives, where it took 15 votes, 15 rounds of voting to select a Speaker. The, for the audience, public comments are on the agenda. Please note that this is a special meeting and not a regular meeting. At a special meeting, comments are limited to topics on the agenda, which is to appoint an individual to the vacant seat. This means that comments on other matters of District operations will not be allowed. Secondly, I would ask the public speakers to keep their comments brief. We have a number of people in the audience, and I think it's sufficient, if you identify who you are, where you maybe, where you live, maybe a brief statement of support for a particular candidate, and then allow the other candidate, other public speakers to speak. If you follow, if a public speaker follows an individual that, with a similar kinds of statement, I would ask that they not repeat the same kinds of comments that they merely support and echo what the previous Speaker has said. Again, with the questions that the Board will propose to the candidates, there will be no follow-up questions from the Board. So with nine candidates, you will have approximately two and a half hours of interview when you look at the break time and passing periods in between, but under these circumstances, a self-imposed goal of a shorter public comment period, I think is reasonable and appropriate. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mobley. Appreciate the directions, very thorough. I'm gonna go ahead and read some of the directions on public comment. Alrighty, "Public comments will be limited to five minutes per person. Six or more people who wish to speak on any one subject matter will be provided no more than 30 minutes total per Board Bylaw. Speakers are cautioned that under California law, no person is immune from liability for making intentionally false or defamatory comments regarding any person simply because these comments are made at a public meeting. Comments on any other subject matter within the Board's jurisdiction may be addressed during the next regular Board meeting on Tuesday, February 7th, 2023." Alrighty, we'll go ahead and start with our first Board Comment, and I will welcome Pat Mills, Athletic Director. Come on up.
Hi, good evening, everybody. My name's Pat Mills, I'm the Athletic Director at San Bernardino, and I'm here representing all of our Athletic Directors. Some of them couldn't make it here tonight, they have games, other ones had some commitments. So they asked me, and the first thing, I know you'll enjoy this, they told me to keep it brief, so I would. Nine years ago, almost 10 years ago, we started the Athletic Strategic Plan, and the only person left on the Board now is Mr. Tillman. He was part of that, and so was Ms. Flores, and it was a big, huge step in athletics becoming what they've become so far today. The new people on the Board, you see how great all of our schools have been doing. We've had state champions, we've had league champions, galore, we've had Ken Hubbs winners, and a lot of that comes to the plan that we started nine, 10 years ago. And Dr. Flores was on the ground level of that. She was one of the first people we spoke to. We spoke to Mr. Gallo, we spoke to Mr. Tillman, and Ms. Flores at a Royal Valley one day, and we're very appreciative of what happened. Now, what's happening now is all these other districts are kinda jealous that our schools have been doing very, very well, and they've asked us, you know, how have we been doing it? And now, they are trying to model themselves after us, and we know now it's time to go to ASP Plan 2.0, and so we would be very appreciative if Dr. Flores was on the Board to help Mr. Tillman, let everybody else on the Board know where we were, because where we were 10 years ago is drastically different than where we are today. It's a night and day difference. We still want to go even higher, because we want to be the best in the state, we don't want to be the best in our area, and so Dr. Flores, though, she was there. She had a daughter who was coaching at our schools when we first started, and she understands just how important athletics is. So as Athletic Directors, we would love it if Dr. Flores was appointed to the Board for this next term, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Coach Mills. Appreciate it. Alright, our next public comment is Oni Jimenez. Welcome, Oni.
Good evening, President Wyatt, School Board Members, and our two brand-new Board Members and Cabinet. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on behalf of our Members. CUCAs is here today to voice their support for Dr. Barbara Flores for consideration for the vacant seat on the School Board. Dr. Flores has always been dedicated and passionate with issues related to students, staff, and the community. She takes time to evaluate and understand the issues that are addressed to the Board. I admire her passion to ask questions, gather input from parents about what they think is working and what is broken in our schools, and has always had an open policy with staff and parents to call her with any concerns and issues. These are just a few reasons, among many others, that we feel Dr. Flores would be an excellent choice for the vacancy on the Board. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Jimenez. Alright, our next public comment is Squire Tim Prince. Come on up, Mr. Prince.
Good evening, Board Members, Parents, Staff. My name is Tim Prince, born and raised in San Bernardino, and practicing law, going on 33 years. Graduate of San Bernardino High School, but disappointed in the Athletic Director's comments. He didn't mention, he didn't mention the kids once in his comments to you, and that's kinda why I'm here. I understand there's some people that prefer the previous Board Member, but as parents, we don't share that feeling. We're not satisfied with the state of our schools. We're not satisfied with the progress that former Board Member Flores made on the Board. I'm not here as any kind of adversary of Ms. Flores. I don't have any personal reason to dislike her at all. I'm here because of my son. I'm here because my daughter graduated from these schools. I'm here because I care about this community. The comments of Dr. Flores subjected this District to liability. You all are gonna have to deal with that. The positions and comments of Board Member Flores made it impossible for our previous Superintendent to have the kind of change and success that he's enjoyed in other Districts. He's a change agent. We missed an opportunity there. I don't want to miss any more opportunities. It's unlawful to use public resources for any political or personal purpose. I know you all know that. Apparently, the former Board Member and her daughter did not know that. And to use a District List and District Email in connection with this bid of hers to go against and thwart the voters who removed her from office is unconscionable. President Wyatt, I would highly suggest that you recommend to the Board that her name be removed from consideration because of that. We don't need any more problems with people who skirt the law. There are other good candidates. The Department of Justice report by itself is a reason not to consider Dr. Flores. And as, I won't repeat my comments from last week, but the advantage of an incumbent means that you don't just look at the hundreds and hundreds of votes that she was short, you look at the fact that she didn't make use of her incumbent's advantage. The playing field was not level, and the voters spoke very loudly and very clearly on that, and I know you won't intentionally thwart those voters. I really believe in this Board, I believe in the new unity and the future of this Board, and the future of this District. Let me illustrate just why I think it's so important, and why I have the courage to come up and pick out a fellow Democrat and speak so frankly. I was really upset with this state of affairs when Judy Penman was seeking reelection, and when Ms. Medina prevailed, that was just groundbreaking for this District. You could see the change immediately, a very good change. Could you imagine if that Board had reappointed Judy Penman to fill a vacancy after that groundswell election? Yeah, Judy didn't lose by much because she had incumbent's advantage, but she lost. And now, her husband lost in his bid for Mayor, and Dr. Flores found herself at the top of his fundraiser invitation. We don't need that kind of past. We've had some very tough decades in this city. Those of us that have stuck it out, like Danny and myself, Mickey, all of you, we need to see a better future. Let's not go back, let's go forward proudly. Thank you, Board Members.
Thank you, Mr. Prince. Okay, our next public speaker is Vanessa Alba. Welcome, Ms. Alba.
Okay. Good evening, Board Members, President and Cabinet. I am Vanessa Alba, I'm a teacher at Palm Avenue Elementary. I'm here as witness of the good deeds of Barbara Flores and why she is deserving of filling the vacancy. I would first like to mention that being an instructor for San Bernardino City Unified School District has been a challenge. It is a socio-economic issue we face every day as teachers, where we find ourselves using our very own paychecks to supplement and foster the learning of our students. Barbara Flores heard our concerns. She, a former educator herself, sympathized with us teachers. She amplified our concerns and ensured our salary was increased. In addition to this, she made our efforts to, she made efforts to ensure that we had an extra $500 to add to our budget. Those $500 changed the rhythm of my classroom. You should have seen how my students smiled, knowing we got the supplies we have anticipated for so long, all because I could not afford it to pull it out of my own check. Thank you again, Barbara Flores, for that. This is only one of the few small acts of kindness and example of courage she has shown to our community. Forgive me, but I cannot really recall many of Board Members before me have visited school sites as a former student of San Bernardino City Unified or teacher at Palm Avenue Elementary. Barbara Flores, on the other hand, did. Not only do I recognize her from my childhood and her involvement with the first DUO program that initiated at Belvidere Elementary, but in present day, she made effort to visit my school site and several others to ensure that safety protocols were being followed. The Superintendent and other District staff have visited my site, seeing the dangerous concrete slips that were hazardous for guests and our students. My principal admitted to me that she requested for this change only to be ignored, but Barbara Flores, on the other hand, didn't ignore us. She visited and made sure that our school could be safe for everyone in attendance. Shortly after her help, she was ready to visit other school sites in the District. Barbara Flores didn't only help foster the learning of our students, but she gives us a voice for those who cannot be heard. Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, our next public comment is Daphne Hawkins. Welcome.
Good evening, Board President and Board Members. It is with great honor that I stand before you today and say that I support the appointment of Felicia Alexander. As a business owner and community leader within San Bernardino, I service your youth, young ladies ages 13 to 21 from your school district. I can tell you that Ms. Alexander would be the best for this position, not because of anything else other than her compassion and empathy for our youth and servicing our youth. I am submitting my support for her. She is a woman of integrity, passion, and vigorous zeal for the success of children within our community. I have watched her lead in excellence, fight for the success and advancement of our youth, and walk in compassion every day towards people. Her leadership, education, and experience, her passion will help to improve the lives of the District's students and families and employees. I encourage the School Board Members to vote yes to appoint Felicia Alexander as your next School Board Member, and I'm standing before you today on behalf of many CBOs within the communities that is servicing your youth directly. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hawkins. Alright, next public comment is Ms. Teresa Alba. Welcome.
Buenas tardes, señor Presidente, Dr. Wyatt, miembros de la mesa directiva, gabinete presentes. Mi nombre es Teresa Alba. Soy, tengo más de 25 años de trabajo comunitario en el distrito escolar de San Bernardino. Conozco a la mayoría de ustedes.
Good afternoon, President Wyatt, Cabinet, and Members of the Board. My name is Teresa Alba, and I have been a community member and part of the community work here for 25 years.
Estoy aquí para abogar por la doctora Flores.
I am here to advocate for Dr. Flores.
Y le pido a los miembros de la mesa directiva...
And I ask the Members of the Board...
Que tomen la decisión sin pensar en fines políticos.
To take and make your decision without thinking of political gain.
Necesitamos personas que apoyen a la comunidad de estudiantes.
We need people who will, who will support our student community.
En los 14 años que la doctora Flores ha servido a la mesa directiva...
In the 14 years that Dr. Flores has served in the Board...
Ha hecho bastante por la comunidad.
She has done a lot for the community.
Y los únicos que somos testigos de ello somos la misma comunidad.
And all those that are witness to this is the community itself.
La doctora Flores ha demostrado tener amor, empatía, y la dedicación para nuestros estudiantes.
Dr. Flores has demonstrated love, empathy, and support for our students.
No tengo que decir con el conocimiento porque ustedes lo saben.
I don't have to say this because you do know this.
Como profesora de la Universidad de College State, formadora de maestros...
As a professor of Gold State University, teaching, teachers...
Sabe perfectamente las necesidades de los maestros dentro de los salones de clase.
She knows the needs perfectly well of those teachers inside the classrooms.
Durante su trabajo en la mesa directiva...
During her work at the Board...
Se ha asegurado junto con los miembros...
She has ensured along with the Members...
Que no les falten a los maestros los recursos para enseñar.
That the teachers do not, they don't scarce out from the needs that they need to provide.
Ha estado pendiente de que tengan desarrollo profesional.
She has also been in charge of them getting that training, professional training.
Y se ha estado pendiente de que los estudiantes reciban lo mejor que tenemos de educación hasta el momento.
And she's ensured that the students receive the best education that we can up to this point.
Ha sido una persona que cuando visita las escuelas, las visita para mirar qué se está haciendo, no para la fotografía.
She has been a person that when she visits schools, she visits schools to see what's being done, not for the photo op.
Asiste a los eventos, eventos que tiene que asistir cuando se va a hacer una diferencia, no para la fotografía.
She is, she assists the events that do happen to make sure that what's happening is going on, not for the photo op.
Algo que ha llamado mucho mi atención en su servicio...
Something that I have that has, that has been highlighted in her service to me.
Usualmente, todo mundo está pendiente del estudiante hasta que termina la high school.
Usually, everybody is in charge of that student up until they finish high school.
La doctora Flores no.
Not Dr. Flores.
Soy testiga de estudiantes que después de graduarse de la high school...
I'm a witness of students that even after graduating high school...
Han tenido problemas para ir a la universidad.
They've had troubles to get into the university.
Como perder, pagar los 100 dólares que se pagan para apartar el lugar...
Like not being able to pay the $100 to reserve that space...
O haber tenido una emergencia familiar.
Or having a family emergency.
Y estos estudiantes se comunicaban con mis hijos o conmigo...
And these students, they would contact my children or myself...
A su vez, yo buscaba a la doctora Flores.
And then I would go and reach out to Dr. Flores.
Ella salvó a más que yo conozco de 10 estudiantes de que no perdieran su oportunidad universitaria.
She saved up to 10 students that I know, so that they would not miss out on their opportunity to attend a university.
Y una de ellas la tienen como maestra en la escuela King de matemáticas.
And one of them, you have him as a teacher at school King, as a math teacher.
Esto habla mucho de lo que es el liderazgo.
This speaks on what leadership is.
No se queda aquí.
It doesn't stay here.
Se sale de aquí.
It goes out of here.
Servir a la comunidad no significa caerle bien a todo el mundo.
Serving the community doesn't mean that everyone likes you.
Significa hacer para lo que se apuntó.
It means to do what you signed up for.
La doctora Flores es la candidata...
Dr. Flores is the candidate...
Que necesitamos ahí.
That we need there.
Con ustedes seguramente irán muy adelante.
With you, surely enough showed advance.
Esperamos, yo quiero hacer notar algo.
I do want to highlight something.
Somos aproximadamente 80% de latinos en el distrito escolar.
We are approximately 80% of Latino community in the District, this District.
Desafortunadamente, no todos pueden votar.
Unfortunately, not everyone can vote.
Los pocos que votan, lo podemos, lo hacemos.
The few that can vote, do do it.
Pero esos, esos niños y esos padres no pueden quedarse sin voz.
But those children and those parents cannot be left out without a voice.
Y le pido a la mesa directiva que considere su decisión basado en las necesidades de la comunidad.
And I ask the Board to consider and make your decision based on the needs of the community.
Tomen en cuenta su dedicación.
Take in account your dedication.
Su amor.
Your love.
Su conocimiento.
And your knowledge.
Y juntos todos ustedes...
And together, all of you...
Pueden moverse hacia adelante.
Can advance and keep going forward.
Estaremos pendientes. Muchas gracias.
We will be here, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Alba. I believe, Ms. Cunningham, that is it for in-person public comments. We'll move on to our virtual public comments, in the order that I have the list that you presented to me.
Not everybody's here, so I'll go ahead and do them.
Oh, they are here in person?
No, 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 I mean, they're not all online yet.
Oh, okay, okay. I'll let you facilitate. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. The first speaker will be Linda. Linda, if you're available, please unmute now.
Okay.
Welcome.
Hi. Good evening, Board Members. Board President, Dr. Scott Wyatt.
Board President Dr. Scott Wyatt, Vice President Mr. Danny Tillman, Assistant Superintendent Dr. Sandra Rodriguez, Cabinet, and my CSEA brothers and sisters who are in attendance tonight. My name is Linda. I am a classified worker, and I'm calling to show my support for Dr. Flores tonight. She has been a great supporter of us classified workers through the years, as well as our certificated teachers. She truly, truly cares for us, as well as our students and parents. She has been my go-to whenever I have a question or concern, and she steers me in the right direction of who to get a hold of. And I will always be thankful to her for that. When I call her, she always, always responds. In the past, I have tried to email board members, but they never responded, and that has always stood in the back of my mind. But with Dr. Flores, she went above and beyond to return my calls, emails, or texts. She has done so much for our district, and we need her on our board. She has a truly loving and compassionate and caring demeanor about herself, and it shows. We need her input, her expertise, and experience on this board. I feel she speaks for us classified workers when no one else will, when they will not listen. She has been on this board for fourteen years, and I think that should say a lot. She wants the best for our scholars. Watching the board meetings, I see her asking the questions when it comes to programs, the budget, health, and safety, et cetera. It's not an easy job being a board member, I'm sure, but when you have a person who is transparent, that's what us classified workers look at. And that's what we want and need, and that is Dr. Barbara Flores. Last meeting, a gentleman said in closing, "The voters have spoken." Well, I'm sorry, and I beg to differ, but tonight, they have spoken. And that's why we are here tonight, and that is for putting Dr. Flores back on the board. So, let's see. What else? What else? I'm sorry. Okay, and now, the voters have spoken, and we want Dr. Flores back. Thank you so much, everybody, and have a good night. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Mrs. Negretti. If you're available, please unmute now.
Good evening, Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide my public comment. I want to begin by reading what was sent to all certificated and all classified. And this was sent from Ana Perez, who is the Verdumont principal, who also probably is one of Flores's good friends, so I could see how this went down. At ten twenty-three, Ana Perez abused her position and sent this email. "My dearest SBC USD certified and classified family members, my name is Ana Maria Perez. I am currently the principal at Verdumont Elementary. I, reaching out to all of you to please come and support Dr. Barbara Flores in attaining the vacant seat for our San Bernardino City Unified School District Board members. Dr. Flores has been a long-life advocate for all of our students, but especially for English learners, our African-American students, and our special education students. There is no one else who has devoted more of her love, devotion, and dedication to fight for our students than her. Therefore, please, I ask that you support her in by attending tomorrow's evening sport meeting in parentheses, one twenty-four, twenty-three, and letting our other board members that we need someone like her to continue advocating for our school district babies, for our SBC USD babies. Thank you all so very much, and I hope to see each of you there. Ana Maria." Of course, this was followed by an email from the district, which to me sounded hypocritical because the email that the district sent out following that was, "To be clear, the district does not support or endorse any particular candidate for appointments to get the governing board vacancy. Any investigation is underway to determine how this incident unfolded. Please be aware that it is a violation of district policy AR four one nineteen point twenty-five for employees to use district property to campaign for political candidate. The district takes allegations of mixed conduct seriously and will take steps to ensure this does not occur again." I ask you, what will be done other than this? Because it seemed that nothing's been done in the past when it's someone that has preference with the district, such as the principal from Verdumont. And it was her email with an attachment with Barbara Flores's flyer which stated, "Please come and support my mom at the upcoming board meeting Tuesday, one twenty-four, at five thirty. She is going for the empty school board seat." The email sent out after the fact from the district stating that there was no knowledge, again hypocritical because there's absolutely no way that no one, none of your assistant superintendents, no one you, I really believe strongly that there will be no no policy, no protocol of what was the violation of policy because, of course, is Barbara Flores's daughter working along coincided with the Verdumont principal. When people continue to say that she was elected and emphasize on the fourteen years, let's go back fourteen years ago. Fourteen years ago, Barbara Flores left Lenox Unified School District. Why? Because charges were going to be filed with the district attorney. She quickly came here and ran. No one knew. And again, when you look at the regular board meetings, those board meetings are pretty much empty. Unless someone is receiving an award, that room is pretty much empty. So that tells all of you, it's a disengaged community, and we know that. So no one knew how she left that. I trust that you have new bodies, new board members, and I hope that there can be better transparency, not the overstepping that has been going on for years. It would be great if there were term limits. It would be great if any of you want to change and adopt a policy that has term limits so that nepotism doesn't continue to go on in the school district. And it would be more inviting for those highly qualified staff members who have left and long gone to other districts. You have teachers speaking on behalf of Barbara Flores, who are so emotionally unstable
Time.
That can give together a meeting and a comment without crying.
Thank you, Ms. Negretti.
Our next speaker is James Albert. If you're available, please unmute now.
Yes, thank you. James Albert, San Bernardino community member, speaking in support of Dr. Barbara Flores. I just urge you, the board, to uphold the will of the voters in the most recent election and support Dr. Barbara Flores in the vacancy for this seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Albert.
Our next speaker is Darlene Carter. If you're available, please unmute.
Good evening, President Dr. Scott Wyatt, Danny Tillman, I mean Vice President Danny Tillman, and all of those with titles. I am speaking as a community member of San Bernardino City Unified School District. I'm speaking regarding the email asking for support of Dr. Barbara Wyatt, being provisionally appointed to fill the vacant seat left by Dr. Gwen Rogers. After considering the message sent out via the district email, I could not sit by and not speak out regarding the democratic process that took place in November twenty twenty-two. What does democratic process mean? It means that our government, federal, state, and local, is elected by the citizens. Citizens vote for their government officials, and these officials represent the concerns and ideas of the citizens in government. Therefore, we, the citizens of San Bernardino, have spoken loud and clear. I am punish you to listen to the voices of the people. Do not use your power to override nor overturn what the people have spoken. I know it's easy to feel that Dr. Flores is possibly the best candidate because she comes with years of experience as a San Bernardino board member. Nevertheless, we, the people of San Bernardino, were not convinced. Therefore, I'm asking you to do the right thing because it is the right thing to do. Do not, and I repeat, do not throw out what the people have said and place Barbara Flores in the vacant seat. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Our next caller is Andre Castrohan. If you're available, please unmute.
Hi, my name is Andres Castrohan. I'm a student at Cal State San Bernardino. I'm majoring in studio arts. I used to attend San Bernardino School District, and I actually graduated from Arroyo Valley High School. And I had great support from my IEP. I recently graduated from two thousand and nineteen. As a former student, I believe it is important for students that Ms. Flores continues to be the board member. Ms. Flores has shown a great amount of interest of students and all, support in all students, not only identity, but also in our mental health. She was extremely supportive, bringing SLIC to our district. I joined SLIC when I was a junior in high school. Around that time, I also lost both of my parents and soon beloved teacher. And my mental health was low, and although I have access to school counselors, I did not, it was too intimidating to talk about mental health in that serious aspect. There was a lot of personal reasons, but I just couldn't walk up to them. And not being able to express myself was just miserable. With SLIC, with the program that Ms. Flores brought, it brought a safe place for mental health. It allows students to talk about topics that are kind of heavy to talk about, and it was just nice to have someone to just relate with. With SLIC, I feel like I connected with them, both like having a conversation with a mentor that didn't feel forced or scripted. Both sides were open as people, and we had a sense of vulnerability. And I won't lie, I missed the program ever since then. And personally, it was hard to work up, to warm up on the deal about talking about our mental health and our personal issues. But the final day was tearful goodbyes and it was tearful goodbyes and hugs to the people who told us that was okay to talk about this topic. The experience of SLIC is something I will never forget. Words cannot explain how grateful I am to be a part of it. Each student has their own personal journey, and having resources like these are unbelievably useful and helped us in our day to day lives. I would like to thank Dr. Flores for being a stepping stone for my mental health journey, both as a student and as a person, for being the bridge for students to be able to talk about our mental little beings. It's starting for me to hear that the program hasn't come back since my time at Arroyo Valley, and I truly think it should come back now more than ever. In addition, Ms. Flores is a person who has dedicated herself to education, and her experience has helped thousands of students who have now became educators. The San Bernardino community needs her because her actions have shown that all students deserve a quality education because we all matter. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we're going to actually go back to in-person public comments at this time. There are some technical difficulties for some folks that are virtual. So at this time, I will call up Carolina Isom, or Isam if I said that wrong. Thank you. Welcome.
Good night, everyone.
Buenas noches a todos.
Con todo respeto que me merecen, les comparto mi experiencia personal.
With all due respect, I am going to share my personal experience.
La doctora Flores es un candidato como parte de la mesa directiva que nuevamente se reúna y forme parte de este equipo.
Dr. Flores is a candidate that needs to be part of the board, that now needs to be involved in this body.
Well, I forgot to tell you about me. Okay. Mi nombre es Carolina Isumi.
My name is Carolina Isumi.
Ahorita soy estudiante del colegio de San Bernardino.
And I'm a student at the college, San Bernardino College.
Y como padre líder
And as a parent leader
Pido que se reuna la doctora Flores a este equipo.
I request that Dr. Flores be now united into this team.
Tengo cuatro hijos.
I have four children.
Dos en la escuela primaria.
Two in elementary.
Una en la middle school.
One in middle school.
Y una en la high school.
And one in high school.
Cuando se han hecho eventos comunitarios
When we've had community events
La doctora Flores se ha involucrado
Dr. Flores has been involved
Y siempre se comunica con los padres para saber qué necesidades tenemos.
And she always reaches out to the parents to see what needs we have.
Sé que ahora fue la número dos en las elecciones, pero
I know that now she's second in the elections.
Pero no quiere decir que por eso no pueda ocupar este puesto de vacante en la mesa directiva.
But it doesn't mean that for that reason she can't take that vacancy in the board.
En mi camino como estudiante
In my walk as a student
Me ha apoyado y me ha inspirado
She has supported me, she has inspired me.
Que ahora me voy a transferir a UCR.
That now I will be transferring to UCR.
El próximo mes también dejó España, me gané una beca.
And next month, I will be traveling to Spain. I won a scholarship.
Y fue de unas palabras que ella me dijo.
And it was because of words that she shared with me.
Que nunca mi edad era mi límite.
That never my age was going to be a limit.
Lo que necesitamos en esta comunidad
What we need in this community.
Es una doctora Flores.
Is a Dr. Flores.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, our next public comment speaker will be Rosa Loera. Welcome.
Buenas noches, Mesa Directiva.
Good evening, Board.
Nunca había estado tan feliz de estar fuera del hospital como hoy.
I've never been so happy to be out of the hospital as I am today.
Ayer peleé con todos mis doctores para que me dejaran salir para poder hablar hoy.
Yesterday, I fought with all my doctors so that they could let me go, so I can come speak.
Yesterday I fought with all my doctors so that they could let me go so I can come speak today.
Quiero hablar un poco de que se me hace injusto que por un error que se cometió estén queriendo atacar a la doctora Flores.
I want to speak on the fact that I think it's unfair that because one mistake was made, then now we want to attack Dr. Flores.
Pienso que ella no tiene nada que ver con este error que se cometió.
I think that she has nothing to do with this mistake that was made.
Todo lo contrario, ella siempre ha sido tan transparente.
On the contrary, she's always been so transparent.
Que no lo creo que ella hubiera aceptado que se hubiera cometido ese error.
That I don't think she would have accepted that that mistake was made.
Como madre voluntaria que he sido por estos quince años.
As a volunteer parent that I've been for these last fifteen years.
Puedo con mucho orgullo decir que la doctora Flores ha sido mi mejor modelo.
I can say with great pleasure that Dr. Flores has been my greatest model.
Me ha enseñado tanto a ser una persona humanitaria.
She has taught me so much to be a humanitarian.
Y una persona que da el tiempo con amor.
And a person that gives up her time with love.
Y puedo decir que el 99% de ustedes me conocen.
And I can say that 99% of you all know me.
Y saben a lo que me refiero.
And you know what I'm talking about.
Es tanto el amor que ella me ha enseñado a dar.
It is so much the love that she has taught me to give.
Y lo mucho que he aprendido a dar tanto a mis padres como los alumnos y como ustedes.
And so much that I've learned to give to the parents, the students, and all of you.
El respeto que ella me ha enseñado es algo que no se aprende tan fácilmente.
The respect that she has taught me is something that you can't learn it so easily.
Y quisiera tener su fuerza y su cabeza, su cerebro de ella.
I would like to have her strength, her brain, her head, which she owns.
Para poder ser tan fuerte como ella lo es.
To be as strong as she is.
Las veces que yo he necesitado que me ayude para cualquier problema con algún alumno.
The times that I've needed help, or the times that I've needed her help to help me with any issues with a student.
La señora Applegate, la señorita Rodriguez, me han dado la mano al instante.
Ms. Applegate, Ms. Rodriguez have handed their help instantly.
Al igual que la doctora Flores.
And also Dr. Flores.
Nunca hubo un no, no tengo tiempo más tarde, o no me contestaba el teléfono.
There was never a no, I don't have time later, or not, she didn't answer the phone.
Siempre está ahí para la comunidad y especialmente para los alumnos.
She's always there for the community and especially for the students.
Siento que necesitamos a la doctora Flores en ese lugar, ahí donde ella pertenece.
I feel that we need Dr. Flores in that space, right there where she belongs.
Porque es una mujer modelo para todos nosotros, los padres y para los estudiantes.
Because she is a role model woman for all of us, the parents and the students.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, our next public speaker and comment is Maria Dolores Ochoa. Welcome.
Buenas tardes, buenas noches a todos los miembros de la Mesa Directiva. Me da mucho gusto mirar sus caras. Ustedes me conocen por más de 20 años.
Hello, good evening, good afternoon to all of the board. It's a pleasure to see your faces. You know me for more than 20 years.
And señor Danny Tillman, la señora Abigail Medina.
Mister Danny Tillman and Ms. Abigail Medina.
Doctor Sandra Rodriguez.
Doctor Sandra Rodriguez.
And la señora Applegate.
And Ms. Applegate.
Con ustedes he tenido el gusto y el placer de compartir y trabajar.
With you, I've had the pleasure to share and work.
Y todos nos han ayudado en las necesidades que hemos tenido con padres y estudiantes.
And all of you, all of you have helped us with the needs that we've had with parents and students.
Y ustedes lo han hecho con mucha pasión.
And you've done it with passion.
Para hacer la diferencia.
To make that difference.
Para nuestros estudiantes.
For our students.
Para que nuestra comunidad crezca.
So our community can grow.
Igual que la doctora Flores.
Just like Dr. Flores.
Entonces necesitan ese otro miembro para que trabaje junto con todos ustedes para el beneficio de nuestros estudiantes y nuestros padres.
So you need that other member to work alongside you for the benefit of our students and our parents.
Cada uno de ustedes.
Each one of you.
Tiene el amor y la pasión por nuestros niños.
Have the love and the passion for our children.
Que sigan adelante.
For them to keep going forward.
En sus estudios.
With their studies.
Para ser profesionistas.
So they're professionals.
Y regresar a su comunidad.
And come back into their community.
Yo como madre de familia de tres hijos.
Me, as a mother of three children.
De este distrito.
Of this district.
Me siento muy orgullosa.
I feel very proud.
Porque todos ustedes tuvieron un granito de arena que aportaron para que ellos fueran exitosos.
Because each one of you had something to put in there so that each one of them can be professionals.
Y ella, la doctora Flores, es parte de ellos.
And her, Dr. Flores, is part of that.
Por favor consideren para que la traigan.
Please consider her being here.
Y gracias.
And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Cunningham?
That's all our comments.
All righty, thank you very much, and thank you all that came out for public comments. We'll go ahead and move on to 3.0, which is our board vacancy provisional appointment process. And then we'll move on to 3.1, and that will be candidate interviews. Mr. Mobley, I believe I'll turn it over to you at this time. Correct me if I'm wrong, though.
Thank you. I believe the board, excuse me, I believe the board has a list of the candidates. We do have nine, and so the first candidate may come to the podium and hear the questions. They have been advised that they have a 15-minute time limit. They may manage that time with a brief opening statement. You have six questions that each board member will have one question to ask, and if the time permitting, they can make a closing comment. But the time limit will be 15 minutes. There's a timer here that they can see. I will sit next to each candidate, and I will give them a one-minute reminder that they have that period of time left. So with that, unless there are any questions after the Vice President Tillman.
Vice President Tillman.
Yes, so just for clarification, we're going to interview these nine candidates. Interview five, take a break, interview the nine, and then the next step after we hear the interviews, is the board going to do what?
Then the board will enter into its deliberation. All of that will be an open session. I recommend that board members, one at a time, just give a reflection of what they thought of the interview process. I think you will find that many outstanding candidates have come before you, but then each board member should probably look at maybe two or maybe three at the most of individuals who kind of stood out in their minds. And as you go, each board member has an opportunity to speak, maybe mention some of the qualities that they saw that may have an impact on another board member, say, you know, I maybe missed that particular point, and I agree that this particular candidate has a good quality.
So just so I'm clear, so we're going to ask after the interviews for each board members to recommend two candidates.
Yeah, after a general comment and then ask for maybe two, at the most three. And staff will capture that on the screen for each board member, and so they'll repeat names as appropriate, and then the board will be able to see, and the audience for them as well, will be able to see the collection of candidates. And then after each board member's had an opportunity to speak, I think then the chair could entertain a motion to name an individual, and the board can proceed to vote.
Thank you very much. Real quick, any of our colleagues, board members, do you have any questions in regards to the process after we interview our candidates? All right, well, as usual, five minutes for comments. Keep within the five minutes, and then you'll make your recommendations, and then we'll entertain a motion at that time. Thank you, sir.
I believe you have the list, so if you would call the first candidate. I don't have that particular list.
All right, sorry about that, Mr. Mobley, my apologies. Candidate number one, we'll welcome Squire Gary Sainz.
Good evening. Am I on? Is there a timer that I can watch?
Timer's right here.
Oh, there it is. Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm already going on time. Okay, good evening. My name is Gary Sainz. As an opening, I'm going to tell you a little bit about myself. My father, Cruz Sainz, and mother, Esther Garcia, were high school sweethearts at San Bernardino High School, graduating in 1936. I was born at San Bernardino, I mean St. Bernardino's Hospital in 1951. My first home was in San Bernardino's West Side. My first six years of schooling was at Roosevelt Elementary. After graduating from Eisenhower High School, I attended Cal State San Bernardino, graduating in 1974 with a BA in Philosophy from San Diego State. In 1977, I graduated from UCLA School of Law with a Juris Doctor degree. While in school, I worked a variety of jobs, as many students and college students do. Basically, I worked from the age of 14 through the time I graduated from law school and became a lawyer. I practiced law for more than 40 years. My state bar record is unblemished, and now my bar status is as an inactive attorney. I was twice elected by the voters of the city of San Bernardino to represent them as their city attorney. I retired from the city in law in March of 2020. My wife, Linda, and I were married in 1989 at the First Presbyterian Church in San Bernardino. We have two grown children, Elaine and Erin, raised in San Bernardino and attended San Bernardino City Schools. I'm ready for question one.
Thank you. So question one comes from me. What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the board's role in fulfilling that purpose, and how could the board be more transparent in fulfilling that purpose?
The basic purpose of public schools is to provide quality education and facilitate student achievement for all children. The board's role is to represent the interests of the people of the city of San Bernardino in establishing visions and goals for student achievement. Acting on behalf of the public and fully accountable to the public, the board should provide direction and oversight for the superintendent, as well as selecting and hiring the superintendent, teachers, and all staff who manage and conduct school operations. The board can be more transparent by fostering constructive relationships within the district with everyone from superintendent to teachers and staff. Equally significant are relationships with governments, institutions, businesses, and stakeholders, especially the public and residents. Members must be available to the community by attending many district community events and by making presentations to a variety of neighborhood and community groups. When I was city attorney, it was my practice to frequently speak primarily with neighborhood groups, attend their meetings, and to give a formal talk about what was going on at the city. That, I think, enhanced the transparency and also was very well received and appreciated by the public when I would do that. And people who seemed to otherwise be ill-informed became much better informed by my meeting with the public and community regularly, and I would intend to do that as a board member. Ready for question two.
That comes from me. What would you like to accomplish as a member of the board?
Having participated in developing and drafting the city's newly adopted charter, I believe one of the most important duties we included in the mayor's role states that the mayor shall represent the city in intergovernmental relations and establish and maintain partnerships and collaborations to advance the city's interests. As a member of this board, I would like to put forth and promote an increased level of relations, partnerships, and collaborations throughout our community. Collaborations, whether long or short term, with other educators, San Bernardino Valley College and the State University. Middle College comes to mind. Collaborating with the county and possibly neighboring school districts, and of course with the city through the library and otherwise. Such collaborations will result in leveraging district resources in addition to providing additional student opportunities, increasing transparency, and increased district influence upon and from the community. I bring no preconceived ideals or purposes to the board. I will carefully study each of the issues and make comments when I believe such will contribute to the decision-making or to public understanding of the board's decisions. Question number three.
All righty. What do you consider the top three budget priorities for the district? What factors led you to identify these priorities?
There's never enough money to fund all the projects and expenditures that we'd like. I'm sure you all know that. Everywhere I've been, from the Home of Navalny Service to the City Library to City Hall, budgeting has always been the hardest part of governing. Responsible budgeting is probably the most important aspect of planning for any enterprise. Accurate revenue forecasting, maintaining a sufficient reserve, and keeping the budget balance are imperative. Though I have a soft spot for the arts and music, my top three budget priorities are: number one, teachers' compensation. Teachers are over-dedicated relative to what they are paid, and we must be able to recruit and maintain quality teachers. Number two is campus safety. Safety is a growing priority everywhere in these troubling times of increasing violence, and we must revisit our allocations regularly. Number three is funding for special needs students. Special needs students, as I call them, such as English learners, homeless students, foster children, and children of the lowest-income households, require additional funding, and most of our students fall into this category. Success in learning is most difficult when basic needs are lacking. Poverty levels in our district, food and housing insecurity, was a huge district challenge even before the impact of recent high inflation rates. Question number four, please.
Please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
A very strong sense of fiscal responsibility. My experience with the city's bankruptcy makes me aware that even seasoned and good-intentioned overseers of public coffers can fail in fiscal responsibility. It is too often easy to believe that budgeting is a simple and mundane process, but I know that fiscal stability and care in the accounting and spending of taxpayers' funding is one of the highest and most important responsibilities of this board. Number two, I am highly sensitive to the importance that board members and all district employees clearly understand their respective roles, responsibilities and limitations, their roles, responsibilities, and limitations. When such understanding and staying within lanes of function is missing, the inevitable result is costly dysfunction. During my life and career here, number three, during my life and career here in San Bernardino, I have developed many strong relationships and connections, both within and outside the local community, with persons in many levels of government and various occupations. Number four, I am well-known for good character, honesty, integrity, and competence. Number five, I am presently fully retired and will devote myself full-time to this board. Number six, as demonstrated by my decision to become city attorney, when the city had just entered into the largest and most difficult legal case in city history, I will not hesitate to confront the most difficult of challenges and to do all that I can to benefit the district and its students. Question number five, please.
Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
Given my time constraints, I'm going to answer this question more generally than I believe it was designed. I believe those considerations, all of them, are very important. I believe those considerations, all of them, are very important, and it's the board's responsibility to balance all of those considerations, the community concerns, the financial issues involved in any decision, and so on, and come to compromises, always keeping the bottom line that our main objective is student achievement and growth academically. It also pains me when I see our political trends of today interfering in our children's education. K through 12 years in students' eyes may be long. In my eyes, these years go by too fast. Every day, every hour is precious in terms of our opportunity to educate our students. We cannot allow political trends of the present era interfere with the education of our children. Polarized issues of today will come and go, but the education we give our children today will last for their lifetime. We cannot be so selfish that we let our political or philosophical differences interfere with our basic primary purpose of educating our children. As a board, we must always be focused on the bottom line of facilitating education academic achievement of our students. I realize this is easier said than done, but focusing on students is imperative for good decision-making. Question number six, please.
Yes, good evening. Please share any volunteer experiences that you have participated in that have benefited or benefits San Bernardino City High School District students.
My volunteer experiences that have benefited district students include: Number one, school site council and PTA at Parkside Elementary. Number two, city library board member for eight years. Number three, home neighborly service board member for seven years. Number five, district student court proceedings as an observer commentator. Number five, district community collaborator to address the need to reduce absenteeism. Number six, attended district conference to establish a vision for the district. Number seven, dual immersion conference regarding power of being bilingual, biliterate, and bicultural as a keynote speaker. Number eight, career day guest and speaker at several school districts over a six-year period while I was city attorney. Number nine, SBCUSD Health Wellness and Safety Meetings as a participant. Number 10, SBCUSD Principal for a Day as a visiting principal while I was a city attorney. That concludes the six questions. I have a brief closing in my last three minutes. I believe most of you on the board have an education background, which of course I do not. I assume that many of the other applicants or candidates also have an education background. But I would hope that all of you appreciate that boards benefit when members bring unique and different backgrounds and perspectives to the board. I should also note, as an attorney and as a city attorney, that I'm also very clear that my role as a board member would not involve my giving legal advice or legal directions to the city directly. Of course, my background would influence my thought and sometimes my comments, but never would I be giving legal advice to the board. I understand they have attorneys of their own whose role that would be, and it would be improper for me to advise the board. I was here at the last meeting when there was a student or a Stu school showcase. Those schools, as you recall, were Monterey, Rodriguez Pepp Prep, and San Bernardino High School. I was extremely impressed as I watched those showcases and presentations. Particularly, I was impressed with the student presentation and their speaking and the involvement and attitude that they had with regard to the respective programs that they were in. It makes me want to be a part of helping those students succeed. I just walked away from that meeting feeling that way, and I could tell on most of your faces that it was very gratifying to each of you two to watch those students make those presentations. While I look forward to celebrating with you these kinds of student achievements, I realize that this is more gratifying part of being a board member, and I'm also aware of the most difficult part, such as there's some recent issues with the former superintendent, a claim against the district, and so on. I understand those issues and how difficult they are, but I am ready to roll up my sleeves and help this board deal with even the most difficult and trying issues. I'm ready to address all challenges and vow to always keep my focus on our ultimate goal to facilitate and promote the well-being, health, and educational achievements of our students. Thank you very much for allowing me to interview before you tonight. Good night.
Thank you, Mr. Sainz, for being here this evening and for showing interest and wanting to join this board. We appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All righty. Our next candidate at this time is Francesca Villarreal. Welcome.
I start?
You may start.
Okay. Happy New Year. I am Francesca Villarreal. I was originally before the board this time last year, and I ran for the short-term position during the November election. Currently, I work for the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians as Education Benefits Act Coordinator. In this role, I handle educationally-related procurement, budget projections, and revise policies and procedures to ensure that they align with tribal law and federal government. Previously, I worked for Children and Family Services as an educational liaison, supporting the education of foster youth. After graduating from Cal State San Bernardino with the MSW, I began working at the Public Defender's Office as a truancy social worker. In that role, I assisted with eliminating barriers that impacted student attendance in this district, Victor Elementary, Victor Valley Union, and Chino Valley. While at the Public Defender's Office, I also founded Children United Through Empowerment, also known as CUTE. CUTE's mission was to provide support to children affected by parental incarceration. During COVID, the program expanded services to include children experiencing homelessness and living in motels such as the Astro on E Street. CUTE provided food, PPE, and assisted families with connecting with the district to obtain devices for virtual learning. In 2020, CUTE won the National Association of Counties Award. I am currently pursuing a master's in business administration and a PhD in political science from Claremont Graduate University. I am a wife and mother of three in this district. Thank you for having me, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Thank you so much and welcome. What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the board's role in fulfilling that purpose and how could the board be more transparent in fulfilling such purpose?
Thank you. The basic purpose of public schools is to provide a safe environment that fosters the ability of students to learn, grow socially and emotionally, and assist with helping them in finding their path in life. The school board's role in fulfilling this purpose is to provide the policy and funding allocations to allow this to happen. The school board is a governing body that uses laws, data, and stakeholders' feedback to make decisions that are in the best interest of the students. How can a school board be more transparent? Over the past year, I have seen the board not only be transparent with areas for growth and change within the district, but also ensure that the community has opportunities to voice their concerns and ideas before decisions are made. This was seen with the search for a new superintendent and the recent decision on the late start time option. I think the board is in a good space with transparency and collaboration.
What would you like to accomplish as a member of the board?
During these next two years, I plan to advocate for an increase in academic and mental health services for our students. And I want to promote continued collaboration and communication between the board and stakeholders.
All righty, number three, please. What do you consider the top three budget priorities for the district? What factors led you to identify these priorities?
Thank you. With late start beginning next year, an increase should be made to the cap's budget to support Sunrise being available at all school sites and more staffing to get students off of waitlists. Second, an increase in the tutoring budget to address the widening achievement gap brought by virtual learning. The district offers virtual enrichment and tutoring options, but more in-person opportunities should be available for students. And finally, an increase in student wellness and mental health support. The district has school counselors, but we need therapists to help our students process what they experienced during COVID and their feelings associated with coming back to in-person learning. The district provides referrals to community agencies for services, but these agencies are stretched thin and oftentimes have waitlists. We need to develop an in-house solution to address our students' mental health needs.
Please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
Being a parent with children in the district allows me to see and understand how board decisions impact daily operations within the district. My education experience have provided the opportunity to build the strengths of collaboration, analysis, operational design evaluation, and interpretation of dense laws and regulations. Additionally, I am a strong advocate, and I believe in empowering and providing opportunities for others to be the best versions of themselves.
Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
A recent decision I felt strongly about was Senate Bill 328, late start. I would generalize that as a school board member, data and the presence of strategic planning will determine how I vote on any issue before me. I understand the importance of separating my values and beliefs, and in this case, personal scheduling needs, from my professional role. Overall, with any decision or vote, it is important to not only ensure that all governing laws are abided by, but that a decision is done with the consideration of community concerns and impact on students.
Oh, great, okay. I was writing some notes. So please share any volunteer experiences that you have participated in that benefits or benefited our students here in the district.
Currently, I serve as parent representative for the superintendent's parent advisory council. I'm a school site council member at Parkside Elementary. Previously, I was a chairperson at Old Elementary. I'm a member of the district African-American Advisory Committee, and along with my husband, I coach youth basketball for the city of San Bernardino.
All right, Ms. Villarreal, thank you again for being here this evening and showing a strong interest in wanting to join this board. We appreciate your time. Thank you. All right, our next candidate this evening is Alex Avila. Welcome, Mr. Avila. Mr. Avila, I'll take a quick break. He'll be here in just a bit. Good evening and welcome, Mr. Avila.
Good evening. Happy New Year, beautiful people. Good to see you again. So I guess let's start. All right, well, I'm glad to be here. It's exciting. We got a lot of great things happening this year. I'm very optimistic. Our students are gonna be in a great place. And I think, you know, we're gonna give it the best. San Bernardino's going through a transformation, and I'm glad to be a part of that. This is one of my favorite cities, one of my favorite school districts. I've been living in the city for almost 15 years, working with the school district for about 10 years. And so, anyway, I'm excited. I'm ready to rock and roll. And shout out to my students watching and my faculty members watching right now, and my son, who's five, who should be doing homework at this point, but probably watching me right now. Shout out to everybody over there, and much love and respect, so let's get it going.
Thank you and welcome. What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the board's role in fulfilling that purpose and how could the board be more transparent in fulfilling such purpose?
So my parents are immigrants from Honduras, Central America. My first language is Spanish, and I know what it was like as a first generation to come to school, trying to navigate the school system. So one of the things I believe, and it's part of our mission, is to serve students. And how do we serve students to the best? To their best of experience and to give them the highest standards of practices, right? So I say that to say that I was told, growing up, that, you know what, because I didn't know how to speak the language, that I wasn't gonna be successful. So I had to fight through that. I had to learn through that system. And I had teachers who cared about me enough to show me how to navigate that system. And I say that to say that, as a school district, not only are we having challenges with students who speak more than one language, right? The other challenge is this post-pandemic era, right? Students came back and they've been behind in the curriculum. So if you talk to teachers, you're gonna find out that students have been struggling in the classroom, trauma, eviction, homelessness, you know, the COVID mask, you name it. There's been an array of challenges. And so I believe as a school district, one of the things is to bring back hope. Bring back hope, bring back opportunities, and to give the best service to our students possible, especially during these times as we getting into this endemic, right? We're no longer in a pandemic, but we're in this endemic. And how are we gonna get our students to get back on their feet? So that is my response to that question.
Thank you. What would you like to accomplish as a member of the board?
Fellowship, partnership, collaborations. I want to learn. I want to grow. I want to be a partner. I want to be a team player. Because I feel like working together creates a strong school district. And I say that because one of the things is I believe is that we can show people outside of this school district that we can and we will be the best school district in the region, right? I believe that. I believe we all come here with the good intent to serve our students. And so one of those things is to align with the board, agree with things that benefit our students, especially our community and our parents could benefit from it as well. So one of the things I want to bring and be a part of is partnership, collaboration, unity. We can show the world that we can unify, right? We can be professionals, that we can work together. And so I believe in that, and I believe in you all, and I believe we can work together.
All righty, number three. What do you consider the top three budget priorities of the district? What factors led you to identify these priorities?
Technology was one of these things that, before the pandemic, no one really thought about what that process looked like. What we learned during the pandemic was that a lot of people did not have the proper equipment, the tools, the the tools, the resources they needed to follow with the curriculum and the syllabus that were being taught in the classrooms. And it was a challenge. We realized how many students didn't have Wi-Fi, how many students needed computers, the technology, how to use the technology. And so I believe one of the biggest issues is we need to figure out broadband. How do we get Wi-Fi into these households or get access to students to Wi-Fi? Because I believe in the future, there will be some type of hybrid mechanism when we looking at teaching and working with students. So that's one. And the second thing is, once they get the Wi-Fi, how do they get the computers? How do they get access to those, to the equipment? So I think technology is going to be one of those elements. The second is health. As we see that health is a challenge, is a struggle for any school district. Coming back, we still dealing with COVID, masking, vaccine, what does this mean? And so anxiety is pretty high. So how do we bring people back to some sense of normalcy? Some sense of that we're going to be okay. And not just health with COVID, but also mental health. If you talk to teachers, teachers, students, everybody's struggling with this, who am I, what is happening? The cost of living, am I falling behind, et cetera, et cetera? People got stresses of all types of categories. So I say that health is not just a physical thing, but it's also a mental thing. How do we support our students mentally, emotionally, right? And also additionally, other resources to get them up to par. So I say that is going to be a challenge for years to come. And then the other challenge I see is retention. How do we get and how do we maintain retention in the classroom? Talking with teachers, also being a teacher myself and seeing students come in is a challenge. How do you retain students who feel like they don't belong in the classroom or they're struggling in the classroom? They got all these ailments going on in the classroom. So how do we retain students to be successful and hang into the classroom? Don't drop out, don't fall behind. And so I feel like that's a budget. We need to figure out how to reinvest in students so they can meet the standards, catch up with the curriculum. And so anyway, and I just speak for my colleagues as well, because I was talking to a colleague of myself last year. And when we came back into the classroom, it was fascinating. We were always looking like, what happened? These two years behind the Zoom, the screen, what happened? And a lot of us were frustrated because we were trying to teach the same way we were trying to teach before the pandemic. And we had to tell ourselves, we can't do that. You can't teach students the same way you were teaching before the pandemic. Because these other elements come in. So before you can even teach a class, you spend twenty minutes just trying to get to, are you okay? You can't even look at the syllabus or the curriculum. It's like, are you okay? Do you need help? Do you want to talk? Do you want to take? So before you even teach a class, you have to like, bring some type of awareness, some type of empathy into the classroom and connect with students. How do we bring that into the classroom? It's going to be vital. So retention, retention, retention is going to be vital. And so anyway, I say that to say that there's a lot of challenges out there, but I'm very optimistic. I believe we are going to find a solution to this, and I'm excited. I think we can make this work. And I believe no matter what the struggles or challenges, we can overcome it. And so anyway, yeah, retention is definitely going to be a big thing to reinvest into our students.
Please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
Energy. I got a lot of energy. Look, I don't do, I'm naturally high, let me tell you. That's a good thing. Because I grew up poor. I grew up in a, some of our students can relate, in a demographic where there's domestic violence, drugs. But I never was a part of that, right? I always saw that you don't need to do drugs to be, I'm naturally high. I love to love, love to laugh. So energy, I will bring energy, 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 energy. But also creativity, right? My dissertation is in curriculum design, right? And that's what I love doing, designs on curriculum, how we make it equitable, accessible to students, to teachers. So I might have information that can help. And you can teach me, learning. I like to learn. I love to learn, love to laugh, and love to grow. And so for me, what I bring is not just energy, also innovation as well. There might be things that I've learned in other conferences and workshops. I do travel. I do work with other school districts. And I do consult with other school officials as well. So yeah, there's a lot of things out there that I'm learning that we can probably bring here, and you can teach me as well. So collaboration, 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 collaboration. So that's, I'm a team player. So I'm here to work with you all and figure out how we can solve this problem together.
Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
We're a team. So as board members, we got to work together, right? So one of those dynamics is I got to listen to the team and then also figure out how to negotiate with the community what those concerns are. For example, the mask. I mean, it was a nightmare. Parents wanted it, some parents didn't want it, right? And it was this fight around masks. Coming back to school was a challenge. What does that look like? Oh, I don't want my child to be around other six kids. So there's a lot of policies and a lot of things that the school board voted on. There were a lot of challenges that people either were on board or not on board. But we got to work together on this. And so I believe the strategy is to align on some things that we agree on. I don't think we need to fight all the time. I believe there are things that we commonly agree on. And I believe that is what's going to get us to win, to serve our students. And so no matter what your political views, your religious views, I believe we can agree on things that best serve our students. And that's what I believe, a hundred percent. And so, yeah, that's my answer to that.
Great, thank you. So please share any volunteer experiences that you have participated in that benefited or benefits students of our district.
So I've been working with the school district volunteering, helping out for the last fifteen years. Everything from sports to literacy programs, et cetera, you name it. I work with kids five, six, seven, ten, twelve, you name it. I've worked with just about all ages. Now, one of the things that we did do a few months ago that I thought was unique was there was this this challenge about literacy. When the kids were in the pandemic, literacy was an issue. I don't know if you're aware, but the reading dropped dramatically. Comprehension dropped dramatically. The proficiencies were dramatically, it was a nightmare, right? So my son, who's five, he published a book. And he said, Dad, I want to show my friends how to write a book. So I reached out to the Garcia Center and said, hey, we want to do this book workshop with the kids in the school district to help increase literacy. And my son is going to help co-lead this because he just wrote a book. And so we did. People showed up, and he was showing people how to start to tell a story and how he became, you know, wrote this story, how we work it together. Parents came with their kids, and it was all volunteer-based. And it was amazing that parents wanted their kids to learn how to, you know, not learn how to read, but be engaged in reading again. Make reading fun again, right? Literacy should, you know, literacy should not be a punishment, right? It shouldn't be that, okay, the only time you're going to read is when you're going to be in the corner because you're punished. It shouldn't be that, writing should be a punishment, write me da-da-da for. Reading and writing should be fun, should be engaging, should be something we'd be energized around, right? So shout out to my son Lex Avila who's watching this, who is the youngest author in the history of the United States, by the way. I just got to say that. But I want to give a big shout out to him because he's my motivator, right? He gives me hope that we could definitely move this thing and get it right. So anyway, he helped me lead this workshop, and we showed kids how to draw, how to tell a story. And then they read their stories as a community, and it was a beautiful thing to watch. And the kids was like, yeah, I want to write a book and I want to tell my story. And it was a beautiful thing to watch, right? And it was hopeful. So I say that to say that it was a great experience. And working with young people to help you give you ideas how to reengage community is also a great idea. So anyway, it was a great experience. I loved it. Shout out to my son. It was an inspiration. And it was something I'll never forget. And it was something the parents who shared with us will never forget as well. And so the good thing about that experience is those parents continue to reach out to do another workshop. So hopefully with this year, we're looking at doing that. And also how to start a business, because we want to introduce kids to starting their own business and being innovative. So I know I'm getting close to time. I love you all. Happy New Year. It's good to see you. I love your smiles. It's a great time. It's a great year. We're going to have an amazing year. Whether you pick me or not, we're going to have an amazing year. And I just want to put that out there. I'm not discouraged. I understand your job. I understand the duty of this board. And I just want to say thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you for the opportunity. And thank you for what you've done and what you continue to do for our schools and for our students. Blessings to you, your families. If I don't see you in the next couple of months, hugs and kisses. You know, we can do that. And I remember I came last year when it was COVID. You can't even, it was all masks and, you know, but anyway, we're here now and I'm excited. And anyway, it's a beautiful time. It's a great year, and we're going to be successful. We're going to win. Yes for San Bernardino. Yes for San Bernardino School District. We got this. Thank y'all.
All righty, Mr. Avila. Thank you for being here tonight and for your time as well, and your energy and love. And just thank you for showing sincere interest in wanting to be a part of this board. And I want to make sure, is it Mr. Avila or Dr. Avila?
When I turn in my dissertation, you call me Dr. Avila.
You got it. I look forward to it. Thank you. All righty, our next candidate is Michael Rivera. Welcome, Mr. Rivera. I believe it's Esquire Rivera as well, right? Got a lot of lawyers in the house tonight. I don't know. Give me a little word. Just kidding.
Good evening, board. Thank you for your time, cabinet. Thank you guys for this opportunity. I know it's been a long evening. It'll still go further, but I want to introduce myself. My name is Michael Rivera. As Dr. Wyatt said, I am an attorney locally. Started my own law firm last year with some partners. And as a condition of employment, we have a footprint in Los Angeles, San Diego, New York, Boston. But I said, we need a footprint in San Bernardino. And so we've stayed here locally. I was an attorney, young associate at Gresham Savage for nearly ten years. That's a local law firm that many of you guys have probably heard of here in San Bernardino for over one hundred and twenty years. And moved to start my own firm. Been a resident here for over a decade. You don't get to choose where you're born, but you do get to choose where you live. And I have chosen, while many young professionals have left San Bernardino, to stay here in this city because I feel called here. I love this city, and I love the kids of this city. And it's a pleasure to be here.
Thank you so much and welcome. The first question is, what do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the board's role in fulfilling that purpose? And how could the board be more transparent in fulfilling such purpose?
Thank you, Ms. Miles. The basic purpose of the board is really social and economic mobility for all students. Life preparedness, preparing the next generation. How does the board help in this cause? I think it all starts here, in this boardroom with you guys, everyone sitting on the dais. I think this is where it starts. I think this is where the city transforms, raising our young people to become the leaders. How do we make this process more transparent? I think as a matter of law, the Brown Act does that. But as a practical matter, we do that by engaging more stakeholders, making sure that we don't have the same people at the table and that everyone feels like they have an opportunity to join and have a voice. That's how we become more transparent, making sure the same voices don't shut out new voices. And everyone's voice is heard. That's how we continue to be transparent.
What would you like to accomplish as a member of the board?
As a member of the board, first and foremost, I want to leave the district in a better condition than when I found it. We already are seeing incredible progress by everyone here, and I commend you guys for what's going on. It's very exciting to see what's going on in the district. It's some great things, and I'm very happy to see it. There's a vacancy, so first and foremost, I want to fill that vacancy because the great work that's going on deserves a full board. I also want to make sure that, like our slogan says, that hope happens for every single student in our district from K to twelve and even as we start TK, implementing it universally.
What do you consider the top three budget priorities for the district? What factors led you to identify these priorities?
Dr. Wyatt, I think number one is fiscal solvency. Most important thing that we need to do as a budget priority. We need to make sure we're fiscally solvent. We all know the trends in Sacramento predicting to be a shortfall of nearly twenty-five billion. We have also seen the governor's proposal. Looks very good for education, even though there's a shortfall. Looks like he's filling in the gaps. But we need to continue to look forward and make sure that as the years go on, we're still fiscally solvent. I think as we look into the future, to me, one of the other huge priorities is hiring and retaining quality teachers. I think that's very important for the district. We should be the destination for teachers across not only the county but the state. San Bernardino Unified School District should be the place where we have the best and we retain the best. That's a budget priority that we need to make. It's continue to have quality teachers. That's key. And I think finally, as I look at the current law, implementing universal TK is going to be a big deal, and it's going to have to, you know, create more resources, more space. I think that needs to be a budget priority because that's coming up very quickly.
Please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
Thank you. So I do have, in the last decade of service here in San Bernardino, a great deal of experience on a number of boards, technical skills from my background as an attorney. But to me, the greatest strength that I have is the same strength that I see on this board. I was very pleased to see one of the board members, and I know exactly who it was, saying, hey, why don't we rename the city Saint Barnardino? That means that we have passion for the city and we love it. One of the things that I loved seeing was that among all the public comments, a parent who clearly didn't have all the knowledge of how to get their kids the services they needed came for help. And somebody stepped up and said, hey, you know what, I'm going to give you my number. That, to me, is the greatest strength of a board member, is having the passion and the empathy for all of our students and all of our teachers and the parents. And so to me, that's my greatest strength. I love this city. As I mentioned, I've been committed to this city for over ten years. I wasn't born and raised here. My wife was. But we've committed to San Bernardino. We're not going anywhere. In a couple of months, March tenth, we'll have our first baby girl, Jessie Grace. And I want to see her grow up in this school district. I can't wait for her to start elementary school, middle school, and become a Spartan of SNG. I'm very excited about what's going to happen in our district. And so to me, that's my greatest strength. Beyond all the technical and resume issues, it's my passion and my love for the city of San Bernardino and for the kids of San Bernardino.
Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
Thank you. One of the decisions that the board made a few years back that I felt very strongly about was the resolution regarding the commitment to the education of all children and making all campuses a safe zone. To me, that was huge. To me, that had a major impact on the city and on the city's schools. You guys know, as much as I do, the demographic in our schools and what kind of student body we have. I know from my experience as a mentor in the city, as my work, both on boards and in my local church. But seeing the demographic and seeing the resolution and what you guys passed, to me, I felt very strongly that that was very important. And I am certain that that didn't come without some hesitation and maybe some pushback. But you guys were bold, and you guys passed it, and were very specific about what it meant for schools to be a safe zone. We've heard about Uvalde. We've heard about school shootings, but there's also other reasons why schools are not safe for kids to come to. And you guys have made that a priority, and that's something that you have to balance the community needs, the parents' needs, the staff. And I felt very strongly about that decision, and I commend you guys for what you guys accomplished. I'm certain that wasn't easy, and you guys were very intentional about that.
Yes, thank you. Please share any volunteer experiences that you have participated in that benefited or benefits San Bernardino Unified School District students.
Thank you. As I mentioned, since arriving in San Bernardino over a decade ago, I've rolled up my sleeves and become a public servant, not elected, but on the streets day to day, week to week. First of all, as part of Inland Action, you guys may have heard of Inland Action. It's a group that's been around for sixty years. And we advocate in Sacramento and DC every year. We're going soon. And education is always some of our top priorities. And education is always some of our top priorities. So for example, we went to Sacramento last year and we supported and advocated AB 371, SPA 51, which reformed Cal Grant. We also, as the Chair of the Economic Development Committee for Inland Action, brought forward the advocacy for advancing broadband across our region. It's super important for our kids, and that directly benefits our kids. Because as we learned from COVID, we need more access to broadband, we need more infrastructure funding. And so we went to both DC and Washington, talked to our elected officials, and made sure that they understood the needs of our community, of our kids, and heard what was important. We're gonna continue advocating, and that's just one of the roles in Inland Action. Another one is my church. I'm a local member of the Way World Outreach. And along with the children's pastor, about eight years ago, we started Kids Care. Kids Care is, CARE is an acronym for College, Arts, Recreation, and Education. And we took kids from the inner city of our city of San Bernardino, and we mentored them one to one with a college graduate mentor. We would get on a bus every June, and we still do this till this day, every summer, and we drive them to universities. I'm a UCLA alum, so we took them to UCLA. We'd also take them to USC, UC San Diego, Pepperdine. And exposing our kids, city kids, to higher education and to dreams and helping them realize what they can accomplish. We also exposed them to the arts. We went to the California Theater one year and saw Into the Woods. It was a great experience. So these are all things that benefited our kids outside of school, but yet our student body. And finally, I'm also a Board member for Making Hope Happen Foundation. This is the foundation for the school district. Among the things that we do is the kids program, which you guys are familiar with, Dr. Carnegie, Infant Taller Success. You guys know how important it is from zero to three to get child development going and kids starting the process of learning. And so when I first joined Making Hope Happen Foundation, I was very excited about the scholarships that we gave. Hundreds of thousands of dollars to our city's school kids to go to college. Many of them, first generation. But what I also realized is that Infant Taller Success is also very important. And so through kits, through scholarships, Making Hope Happen Foundation has helped the city's city kids directly. We continue to do so. I'm gonna continue to be involved for the foreseeable future. And so those are just some of the ways that I'm involved and have been involved for the last decade in San Bernardino. So in closing, because I know it's been a long evening and I appreciate you guys' time. I do wanna emphasize just some of my background and why this is so important to me and why I'm here. I am a product of public education. I was raised by a single mother, raising two boys. And we grew up in a socioeconomic crisis. And we didn't have very many opportunities or advantages or access. But through public school, from kindergarten all the way to law school, to get my Juris Doctor at UCLA, I was benefited from public education. Great teachers who invested in me, who told me, and I'll never forget, when my seventh grade teacher looked me in the eyes and said, your college material. It meant something to me. It meant that I could make it. And so I know that in this boardroom, lives can be transformed, lives can change. And this is why this is important to me. I think I have the technical background, the analytical skills, the experience. But as I've emphasized, what was important to me is the fact that I can see myself in these kids. And I want these kids to see themselves in me, that they can make it. Our city can rise, and we can move to another level and keep moving forward the way you guys have already got us going. The boat's moving, there's momentum. And that's why I'm here today, to join the ship that's sailed. And I commend you guys for all the work you're doing. And regardless of the outcome tonight, I want you to know that I'm a partner with you guys in everything that you guys do. And I'm very excited. We have stuck our stake in the ground, we are a stakeholder, we will be here. My Jessie Grace will be going to kindergarten TK here. And so I'm very excited about that. And I'm very excited about making hope happen in this district and in the city. Thank you, guys.
Yeah, Mr. Rivera, thank you again for being here tonight and for your time, first of all, and wanting to join this school board. We appreciate it, so.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good evening.
Thanks, Dennis.
Alright. We're actually on schedule, this is great. So thank you for all the candidates and for my colleagues for being prompt. Oh, I spoke too soon, no, I'm just kidding. Okay, we'll welcome our next candidate and welcome Tracy Capps. Come on down.
Good evening.
Good evening, hello. Oh, okay. Okay, so my name is Tracy Capps. And, um, put my purse down. I am a member of San Bernardino three and a half years now. I attend the Way World Outreach. I was a salutatorian, class of '83, Chino High. I got a great public school education. And I'm very excited about, I would like to see, I would like the same opportunity to be presented to... I get tired after a certain time, sorry. I was up at 3:30 this morning. Anyways, I had an attorney service for 30 years. I have a real estate license. I'm the Vice President of my Homeowners Association, Autumn Villas, which is right across the street from Cal State San Bernardino. For a period of time, I was a CASA in Riverside County, that's a court-appointed special advocate. I have two grown sons who graduated college with debt-free degrees. And that is a very important thing to me, that kids start out their, you know, their adult lives with no debt. That's a very big thing in my book. So I raised my nephew for two years during middle school, that was fun. I had empty nest syndrome. And that's where I engaged with Etowahda School District. So you may have heard about that. So anyways, that's enough about me, let's do the questions.
Thank you and welcome. The first question is, what do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the Board's role in fulfilling that purpose? And how could the Board be more transparent in fulfilling such a purpose?
Okay. To provide a quality education is the purpose of public school. And the Board sets policy that determines the trajectory of that. And as far as transparency goes, I don't really see a problem with your transparency. Other agencies I've battled in the past as an activist, they had some big problems with transparency. And we don't need to get into that, but you guys, as far as transparency goes, you film your meetings, you're very open. So I don't see a problem with that.
What would you like to accomplish as a member of the Board?
I'd like to see this Board act be more unified and more consensus. Some of the meetings that I've seen that go on for hours and hours and hours. I think that if you guys had more consensus, more unity on the Board, I think that's what I'd like to see improve. I know I got in charge of my homeowners association, it took some time. But now everything's smooth sailing. Because, you know, we all understand what we need in my community. And the meetings last for, you know, half an hour, quarterly meetings, and, you know, everything's smooth. So I know that's a big jump from running a school board, but I just think that's where you guys could improve.
Alrighty, number three. What do you consider the top three budget priorities for the district? And what factors led you to identify these priorities?
Okay, like last time when I spoke, for me, the way I live is, you know, with biblical principles, which, you know, a number one biblical principle is to stay out of debt. So debt-free as much as possible, and that would involve budget priority number two, getting as much grants and things like that as we could get, and to be good stewards of the money that we do have access to. I can't hear.
Please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the Board.
Okay. I have a lot of integrity. I talked about the leadership role that I play in my community, which includes everything from... Some of the things I do are very undignified, like picking up dog poop. But that's what I do, because somebody needs to do it. And so, you know, if you came and saw how my little development of 63 homes is run, I think I've done a really good job, and I would be willing to impart those skills here. I'm very tenacious. Having an attorney service for 30 years is a very challenging job. You know, and it's not necessarily a woman's job either. And so it involved going to a lot of strange places and interacting with a lot of people. And it caused me to be very bold. And so I bring that tenacity to the table. And one of the things I can cite about my tenacity is interactions that I had with the Etowahda School District. I'm very proud, one of the, it wasn't just me, myself and many parents worked for a year to bring, to restore busing to the Etowahda School District. So that was a Herculean effort, which it really didn't need to be. And they had plenty of money. And so that was a whole year, a little girl died. But eventually, they did bring the busing back, and they do charge for it now. But my niece still rides that bus to this day. So that was a huge accomplishment as far as my tenacity. We had a, we had an online petition, a thousand people signed it. I mean, that was just a push. And I had to interact with them the other day on a, again, and I try to avoid confrontation now. I've learned that you can get farther with kindness. But it took me a long time to figure that out. Anyways, so, yeah, I had to engage with someone there because I found out that on these buses, the kids were sitting four to a seat and on the floor. And so when I found this out, I was pretty livid. But they took care of it right away because I insisted that they do. And they knew, because they had dealt with me before, that I wasn't kidding around. And so those are the kind of things that I'm, you know, that's my personality. I like to take care of business, but now I do it with a very soft approach. So I have this book that I love that I picked up in Hawaii, you see, The Fresh Fruits of Kindness. And so, you know, you can get a lot farther with kindness.
Identify a recent Board decision that you felt strongly about. And describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
Okay, so hopefully I'm not gonna ruffle any feathers tonight, but if I do, oh, well. I just read in the paper about the superintendent and his claim for half a million dollars and all this business. And, you know, me personally, I learned the hard way, that sometimes you just need to zip it. Because saying things, even if they're true, can cause you personally a lot of problems. In my activism, there were times that I would go after people pretty hard, and then I would get threatened with a lawsuit. And then I had to pay an attorney to write a letter. So I've been through this whole litigation thing, and it's always best if you can avoid litigation. That's what I've learned through my years of being an activist. At one point, I was facing, I think, $74,000 of legal fees because I made the mistake of suing Caltrans. You don't sue a public agency unless you have money to back it up, because they will bury you. So as far as, because I was behind that toll-free IE thing, very naive on my part, very naive. It was a good idea, but just not well-funded. So as far as it relates to, I just would advise, you know, that saying, loose lips sink ships. And there's a biblical saying too, I don't, I didn't, I don't have the scripture here in front of me. But sometimes less is more, and you just, you know, you don't have to... You guys had an agreement with him. I met him that, the last time we did this, he seemed like a very nice man. And I don't wanna get in the middle of your thing, but, you know, I kinda lost my train of thought. But you kinda get the idea of what I'm saying. So, yeah, that was something that I don't necessarily agree with. And you guys should probably figure out a way to settle with that man, because you don't wanna be litigating. Because from what I read, he's got a pretty strong case. Anyways, moving on.
Thank you for that. Please share any volunteer experiences that you have participated in that benefited or benefits our students here in the district.
Okay. So I'm very active in my church, I'm a member of the Way World Outreach. And I work right now with the three-year-olds, and I see the potential in these little people. They're like little bitty, gonna be potential adults, and they are so cute. And so, I mean, I literally adore these kids, they're all different too. So anyways, I work with them, I'm around kids who go to San Bernardino Unified, you know, the church is right here in San Bernardino. So hands-on, I'm working with these kids and I love it. Oh, a closing statement. So anyways, there's some really great candidates that I met in that boardroom. They're all really, I mean, from what I saw, they're all wonderful. So you guys have a lot of work to do to narrow it down to one. But, and there's two attorneys, my goodness. Anyways, so that's all. Thank you.
You got counted three attorneys.
Three? Oh, who was the third one?
Are you an attorney?
No, I had an attorney service.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, big difference.
Well, Ms. Capps, thank you for your time.
Okay, thank you.
And being here this evening, and definitely thank you for your interest in wanting to join our school board.
Okay, thank you.
Best wishes to you.
Yes.
Alrighty, folks, we are gonna go ahead and convene to a 10-minute break. And since we're ahead of schedule, we're gonna stay on a 10-minute break. Just because it says later on in the evening, we wanna give our time back to our community and our employees and our folks and ourselves. So please exercise the 10 minutes, that means we will be back at 7:52. Alrighty, folks, thank you for being patient as we take a quick break. We're gonna welcome our next candidate. Oh, okay. Oops, sorry. We got one more we're waiting on. So my pardon. Alright, now we're ready. So we're gonna welcome our next candidate, Felicia Alexander. Come on up.
Good evening. I would like to first say thank you to the Board for giving me this opportunity to come in front of you today to interview for the next Board position. I appreciate it. My name is Felicia Alexander, as I was introduced, and I would like to tell you a little bit about myself. My husband and I reside in San Bernardino, and the city and the community is very important to us, particularly our scholars. That is of ultimate concern and our number one priority. And I'm here in front of you because I'm passionate about our scholars. I'm passionate about the resources and all that we can provide them, because they are our future. And I'm also passionate about my legacy. We have three grandchildren who attend the schools within the city of San Bernardino. One in high school and two that are in kindergarten. And so when I think about their future, which is our future, I wanna make sure that I could be a part of that policy to effectuate change. So I'd like to tell you a little bit more about myself, though. I was raised by educators. My mom is a retired school teacher from LA Unified School District. And my father is a retired aerospace engineer and school teacher from Compton Unified School District. And so as a child, education was impressed upon me. The resources to have in our school district, a lot of my mom was the one who was in front of my educators. So just as she poured into me and my brother, I have done that for my children, and I would also like to do that for our scholars. I'm also a part of organizations that work and help our youth within the city of San Bernardino. I'm currently President-elect of Assistance League of San Bernardino. Assistance League of San Bernardino has two programs in which our students benefit from. And some you might be aware of. One is the Operation School Bell Program, which is a program that helps the children of need within our community in the school district. We provide them with resources and clothing. And I'm proud to say, since 1981, we've been able to clothe over 7,000 children. We also have another program, which is the Dr. Earl R. Crane Dental Center. And that dental center provides free dental... dental center provides free dental, let me take that back, provides dental services that is at a nominal cost of twenty dollars for kids between age five and twenty-five. And the services that they receive is from hygiene services to oral care, and those services you and I pay probably five hundred dollars or more for. So our charitable efforts are one to, one, help our kids, but also to make sure that they are prepared and equipped to go to school with the proper hygiene resources, the clothing, as well as to help them with their dental hygiene. I'm also a member of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, in which in my past thirty-five years of membership, I've been able to be, hold the position of presidency, as well as social action chair, as well as other leadership positions. And as social action chair, I was responsible locally to work with local legislators, also state legislators and federal legislators, fighting on behalf and advocating for our youth and their families related to domestic violence, human trafficking, as well as looking for resources to help and combat homelessness. Lastly, some of you know that I am the founder of the San Bernardino Turkey Trot. And the Turkey Trot is an opportunity and was inspired by my willingness and my interest to instill upon our community family fund traditions, as well as to make sure that we're raising funds while having fun and helping organizations that can help people who can't help themselves. So the community outreach. And lastly, to instill health and wellness, in which many of the students within the city of San Bernardino Unified School District have benefited from because I have collaborated with many of your athletic directors, as well as different teachers who have brought in their students to participate in the race. And most importantly, it instills that fun and that exciting opportunity and create traditions within our city that people walk around and talk about. So I thank you for this opportunity to share a little bit about myself. I'm a servant leader who's passionate about our youth, who's passionate about our community, and would like to be a part of a board who's passionate about our community and our youth and our scholars. Thank you very much.
Thank you and welcome. What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the board's role in fulfilling that purpose, and how could the board be more transparent in fulfilling such purpose?
Our public schools is the gateway to our youth, providing them with education, educational resources, as well as outlets, and as it relates to extracurricular activities. Public schools are funded by, on the state level, federal level, or local level. It's an opportunity to make sure that we are educating, it's a venue to educate children from kindergarten all the way to twelfth grade. The school board provides the policies, votes on the policies, the legislative policies related to their curriculum, testing, ensuring that we have the resources for our students to thrive and survive in this society. And the educators are the ones who implement those policies in the classroom. In terms of transparency, I would say that what I've observed, the school board has provided the transparency according to the governance that is required for your particular
What would you like to accomplish as a member of the board?
Great question. First, I would like to accomplish and understand the goals and the priorities that you've already discussed and agreed to according to your strategic plan. And my personal interest and what I would like to bring into the board and to focus on would be to focus on making sure that we can get back to our pre-COVID numbers. The graduation rate was pretty high in two thousand and nineteen compared to what it is today. And my focus would be to see what we need to do to get those resources, to give the support to our students in order to be able to see how they can matriculate and graduate at higher numbers than we see today. Secondly, I would like to make sure that we're giving the resources to the middle schools as it relates to their after-school programs. And lastly, the Career Pathways Program, in which I am a participant in, I'd like to continue to see that grow and grow our partnerships with different corporations within the county of San Bernardino.
All righty, number three. What do you consider the top three budget priorities for the district? What factors led you to identify these priorities?
So in my current role as an aerospace executive, I'm responsible for my department's budget. And the philosophy that I have there and that I apply is I look at what's the number-one priority in terms of the need and the investment that needs to be made in order for us to be successful. And so from this perspective, as it relates to our scholars and keeping them as our number-one priority, I would say from a prioritization standpoint, prioritize the students, then the staff, and support staff. Students, making sure they have the resources, making sure that the schools are providing equity across the board as it relates to their curriculum and their resources, regardless of their socioeconomic areas. So not just certain schools receiving certain resources, but everybody has the equity path as it relates to the baseline, as it relates to the template that allow the students to be successful. And then secondly, as it relates to the staff, making sure that they're receiving the resources that they need to be the educators that we need in the classroom, giving them the pathway to be successful, equipping them with the tools to provide the students with their toolkit to be successful. And also with our recruitment effort, because San Bernardino is a beautiful place. So pulling in and recruiting additional educators and letting them know where we are, and letting them know that this is a pretty place, this is a nice place to live. So bringing in the best and brightest from a recruitment effort. And then lastly, our support staff, making sure that they receive resources. I mean, COVID, I feel as if really impacted them as well, especially when you think about our janitorial staff. Things have changed from an overall sanitation standpoint. So making sure that we're taking care of those who take care of our students. And ultimately, it all circles back. We take care of our number-one priority, which is our scholars.
Please summarize the strengths that you would bring as a member of the board.
I have over thirty years of corporate experience collaborating and leading teams of multiple backgrounds globally, as well as dealing with genders. And oftentimes, I might be the only female, but working with different people that don't look like me, have different backgrounds, and ultimately still being able to work together for the greater good, or whatever that focus is, whatever we're trying to accomplish. And I feel as if that is a benefit of who I am and what I bring into the room, because I am a consistent broker. I try my best to make sure that we work together. I have my master's in organizational development and leadership. And a part of what I focus on is making sure that, one, we give equity across the board. You listen to people, because that's the only way you're going to grow when you're in a groupthink environment. So I would say my leadership qualities as it relates to being a collaborator. Also, I'm a very resourceful person. I don't let any stones go unturned, and I think no is yes in the future. And by that, I always make sure, looking at it from a greater good, and that would be to take care of our scholars.
Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
So I would say that that would be hard for me to answer in the sense that I would have to have a lot more details related to many of those decisions that were made. However, what I can say is what I admire and what I observed is how the board responded to COVID and the guidelines, and how you're in alignment with federal legislation, what we're doing locally, as well as on the state level, and ultimately protecting our scholars and their families as it relates to the response, sending them home, making sure that there were resources for the students to be able to benefit from distance learning, the resources as it relates to the computers, teaming up with the IT companies, making sure that they had the infrastructure in order for them to be able to learn and be online and still matriculate properly. So that's what I admire and from an observation standpoint. And the last one I would say is the immediate nature that you went into, making sure that this vacant position was filled. Immediately, the board put together a strategic plan, put it out there in terms of the application process, and within next three months, hopefully you'll have a new board member.
Great, thank you. Please share any volunteer experiences that you have participated in that benefited or benefits our students here in the district.
Awesome, thank you. In addition to what I've shared, I'm currently a commissioner for the county of San Bernardino for the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. That commission, we sit down with various departments within the county to make sure that they are meeting the requirements as it relates to diversity, equity, and inclusion, the state guidelines. We sit down with them, we review their plans, we review their achievements, and then we also give them areas of opportunity that they can improve. Secondly, I'm the Girl State representative for my local American Legion Auxiliary. Girl State is a program that we offer to young ladies within the school district to participate in, as they want to learn about just federal government, state government guidelines. And as a representative, I work with the students who are interested. It is a competition, but we first reach out to them, educate them on the program, and then whoever wins gets an opportunity to go and sit down with other girls and network other girls within the state and learn about our legislative body. And I'm proud to say since nineteen thirty-seven, we've been able to impact over a million girls as it relates to the American Legion Auxiliary Girl State program. And lastly, I'm also a past president of my Jack and Jill of America chapter. And in that position, I focused on leadership skills for our youth. So I would like to say thank you for this opportunity and just share with you that this gift of service hasn't been just something I started as an adult. As a child, I worked as a volunteer in special education, working with kids from all over the spectrum. Also, in college, I was responsible for our community outreach program, in which I started a program at Santa Barbara, offering tutorial service for students for at-risk programs. So I thank you for this opportunity. I thank you for the opportunity for you to learn about me, and I hope that I could be your selected board member. Thank you.
All righty, Ms. Alexander. Again, thank you for your time and for being here this evening and for wanting to be a part of this school board. So we appreciate you.
Thank you.
It's time, right? So I just push the camera? How's that work?
Whenever you're ready, he'll hit that button.
Oh, so when I start, you, okay. Well, good evening, board members, cabinet. My name is Francisco Ramirez. I am a, I was born and raised in the Central Valley. I grew up around farm workers. My parents are migrant farm workers. They have no formal education. I came here and I graduated from UC Riverside as a first-generation college graduate back in two thousand and one. I'm also, I grew up being a farm worker. We moved a lot. We followed work. It means you got to go to schools, different schools, different friends, and I really had no stability because we always followed work. Because of that, I feel like I could relate to a lot of our kids because they're always moving, because of housing, because of financial hardship. And sometimes our parents do not explain those challenges to like, to the young kid because they feel that they just need to adjust and adapt. That's an issue, because then you have kids growing up, don't know what's going to happen. Anxiety kicks in. I'm also, I grew up in IEP. I had a speech impairment as growing up. I couldn't really pronounce words, right? A lot of our kids have an IEP. Two of my oldest kids have an IEP currently in our school. I'm also a co-parent, my three kids, that go to a school within our district. I'm also, I'm a double major graduate from UC Riverside. I graduated with sociology, administration, and also ethnic studies, which ethnic studies is going to be a curriculum going to be implemented statewide in California, which I would love to be part of that. In two thousand and eight, I was given an opportunity, actually, when I graduated in two thousand and five, I didn't know what to do in my life. I had no mentorships. I have no experience. So I went to work, I answered an ad on the newspaper to work in direct sales. So I did direct sales for a year until I crashed my car. Fortunately, my father had put insurance on that car, which allowed me to go somewhere else. Was the best thing I could do. I went to a temp agency where I worked at Lowe's. I worked at Kohl's. I looked at a lot of odd jobs because that's the only thing I had available. In two thousand and eight, I promised my dad I was going to do something with my life. I applied to Children Services, Department of Social Services, and I was given the opportunity to come in as a social worker one. As a social worker one in two thousand and eight was a huge change in my life. Let's speed it up because my time is running now. And in two thousand and fourteen, I was given the opportunity to be a community program specialist. I ran a family resource center where our focus was to hub, to boost our services to our families. We provided accounting services, English as a second language. My job as I came, we had seven vendors in our, in our system, our family resource centers, and approved vendor. I'm like, why? Why do we only have seven vendors? I could probably say that I was able to recruit seven more vendors as contract with the department to provide services such as grief and loss. We get a lot of loss in our system. Families don't know how to deal with that grief. I believe I'm going to the questions.
Thank you. What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the board's role in fulfilling that purpose, and how could the board be more transparent in the fulfillment of that purpose?
The basic purpose of our district, I believe, is we prepare and we develop our students for life. If you're not able to prepare our kids for life, we will always have that challenge, such as myself, is trying to deal with and figure it out on your own. We should not get to a point in life that you have kids trying to figure it out when we have a lot of funding in our districts where we could implement certain things to help the kids prepare themselves for real life, real scenarios. Real scenarios is, it gives anxiety because you don't know what's going to happen, you know? And we shouldn't be scared to do that. High expectations for student privacy. One of the most important things is battle punishments within family employers. Those are things that we could do to distinguish ourselves and being able to bring those services, also preparing our students for life. The board's role is to understand that every student has gifts and needs, regardless of the background or challenges. Every student deserves to have the same opportunities that's fair, open, transparent, and respectful. The board could be more transparent by implementing needs assessment surveys. If you ask me if my five-year-old has an opinion, I will tell you she definitely has an opinion. She stands her ground. She lets you know how she feels. Why don't we assess the service for kids kindergarten to twelfth grade? They all have opinions. They are bright. They all have solutions. Second question?
What would you like to accomplish as a member of the board?
Mrs. Husky, they say, right? I want to build strengths culture using Gallup Strength Finders. Our department has been instrumental in being, being able to bring strengths. What are we good at to perform at a higher level? Everyone has strengths. We're so focused on talking about negativity, about things we're bad at. How come we don't talk about the good things? What are you bringing to the table? When we're able to change that dynamic, we were able to change that parent to feel empowered to come and be advocate for us. That's how we're going to move the district forward. I also want to support the multi-tier system of supports framework that allows us to use data. Data is important. By using data, our district will be able to drive decisions aimed at streamlining our operations, by reducing the costs so we can invest programs that will help our children, our families, and our teachers. I also want to bring a father engagement. There's really no father engagement in our district. By running a nutrient fathers program that's evident-based. How I know it's evident-based? Because I got approved as a facilitator to run that nutrient fathers program. We need to teach fathers how to communicate with their kids, how to be more nurturing to that child, to say, "I love you. I love you, and I'm so proud of you," because we don't do that enough. I also, Mrs. Husky, last week you shared about these advisory board meetings for kids, for students to advocate their needs. For three years, I ran a Toast Masters Youth Leadership Program at the center that I used to run, where I taught kids about public speaking, impromptu speaking, hard-rite minutes. Wow, rural rules. speaking, hard right minutes. Wow, rural rules of order. Those kids going back to their schools, they became leaders, they became presidents, they became vice presidents. How did I know that? Because their parents came and told me. And they said, thank you. Because of your curriculum and program that you did in the summer, the Youth Leadership Program, my kids got empowered. And they went back and they became leaders in their own schools. Next question?
What do you consider the top three budget priorities for the district? And what factors led you to identify these priorities?
Thank you, Dr. Wyatt. Last week's agenda, board meeting, we have teachers that are upset. They haven't been paid, you know? We have teachers, administrations say that they're not paid for work hours in our district. I know there's not funding issue, but we've just got to find out how we could manage that and be able to pay them on time. The second thing is closing the achievement gap can help students to college, ready to continue the multi-tiered support framework by investing programs such as Toastmasters Youth Leadership Program. Let's teach our kids how to fish. Let's not give them fish. I think that's a saying that we hear a lot. Let's teach them how to think on their feet, because that will help them become leaders. The third thing I think that we can invest is, we need to amass mental health by building these wellness centers that parents have been advocating for, these wellness centers that we've been advocating for. I want to know what, how we could do that. And four is, I just recently noticed that we did some repairs in our schools. It looks like some schools need to be repaired. They're older. We need to find a way how we could allocate the funding because I need our kids to feel safe, our teachers to feel empowered, and our principals to feel like they're supported. Next question?
Please summarize the strengths you would bring as the member of the board, as a, as a member.
Thank you, Ms. Grande. During this Gallup Strength Finders, they were able to tell me my five top strengths. My first strength is harmony. My harmony looks like I look for areas of agreement. When we have friction, we really can't get things done. So I always look for areas of agreement. My second strength is consistency. Balance is important to me. I'm clearly aware of the need that we need to treat people the same. Doesn't matter your title, doesn't matter how much you earn, we're all the same. My third strength is learner. I'm a fast learner. Ms. Abigail Menina, I know you shared that you're looking for experience on that board. I might not have that experience, but I'm sure I'm a fast learner. And like you and like me, we're, we're parents that were involved in our schools. And you're doing a phenomenal job. So I think that's not an issue about having experience or not. Number four strength is futuristic. I could see five, 10, 15 years from now. I love to plan. I just figure it out, right? And my last strengths are sort of, I love to solve problems. I enjoy the challenge of analyzing the problem, identifying what's wrong, and finding a solution. Next question?
Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
Thank you, Mr. Tillman. You know, one of the things I've been admired is, is our CAPS program. Based on our last meeting, it looks like there's a lot of funding in CAPS, especially after COVID came. I think I've talked to Dr. Rodriguez in a few times, not just one time I had an opportunity to share with her, but I am really involved in Cub Scouts of America, which is also an umbrella of Boy Scouts of America. We teach character building, such as respect, integrity, things that we need to build in our district because we need to build future leaders. How we teach our leaders? Sometimes when I was a social worker, I was like, man, where's your dad? Or where's your mom? They don't teach these manners. And it's like, you know what? I realized that some kids don't get the opportunity to teach these morals and values that are so important for our future. By doing that, I know there's a lot of conflict about Boy Scouts of America because that's what it talks about. But if you look at it, Boy Scouts of America has been for a very long time. We want kids, we want fathers, parents to be involved. I tell people, don't drop your kids there. Be an involved parent. Be present for those camps. Be present for those activities. And by you doing that, you'll be a nutrient father or a nutrient parent. Through hands-on activities and learning experience, scouting helps guide young people on the trail to lifelong appreciation for self-improvement, community involvement, and outdoors. We know outdoors will be really appreciated to our parents, especially in technology, when we have kids looking at their phones or behind their tablets all day. Outdoors is actually beautiful. Next question?
Thank you. So please share any volunteer experiences that you have participated in or have been, that have benefited or benefits our students here in the district.
Ms. Menina, I'm actually currently stay on the Rio Vista School Council for Rio Vista. I became more of an involved parent because someone would share that in order to make change, you gotta become involved. So I am an involved father for that, for my kids, advocate for my kids. And a lot of those meetings, they tell me, Mr. Ramirez, the funding doesn't allocate certain things. You gotta read the bylaws. And I'm like, okay, well, where can you write grants then? How can we get extra funding where it allows us to do things? I want to run women empowerment, like a women empowerment conference, and I just don't say it. We've done it. For the, for three years, I ran a women empowerment conference where I partnered with a local school district. We empower 50 women in our community to be more by teaching them how to set goals, how to plan their goals, and how to have courage. How, how, how can we get you to have courage to step out of your comfort zone? I also attend the superintendent parent advisory council, which I get the opportunity to come here and listen to how our district is moving forward. My two older students also, also part of a coma unity. When I am able to do, I take my kids on Saturdays, where they have a plenty of activities for them to do. And for the past two years, I have volunteered for nonprofits in our community, which we have helped support Winter Wonderland, which is a Christmas event that we have in our community, which I take our kids, but a lot of our kids in our district also benefit from. And those are a few things I've been involved with. I'm also an involved dad. I saw some of our executive board on the Martha Little King Parade, which was great to see you guys there. That's how community is driven, and that's how community involvement is. You need to be present in the community. As I close, it looks like, the time is here. You know what, I wasn't going to share, but we have a career of the year student in our district that he just graduated from the police academy on Saturday. When I was there, I was so prideful of seeing him get his, get his badge at 21. And that's kudos to our chief of police, Josh Polloino, because that is your baby, you know? And he, he has, he could think on his feet. But when I was sitting there, I was like, we have about 47,000 students. We only had one. Why, why can we have five, six, seven? You know? It's the mentorship that we need to get there. I have 27 seconds to say, I want to thank you guys for an opportunity for giving me to be appointed to this board. Grady Rogers has Margaret Hill as a mentor. There's a lot of kids in our district that looks like me. There's a lot of kids in our district that could relate to me. And they could relate with me because I had no parents that had formal education. The only thing that came out from the words is, "Echele ganas." Do your best.
Thank you, Mr. Ramirez, again, for being here, for your time, and for your desire to want to serve on Samuel St. Flash School District School Board. All right, we'll be calling up our next candidate, and that will be Dr. Barbara Flores. Welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Dr. Wyatt, President Wyatt. Nice to see you, Vice President Tillman, rest of my colleagues and board members, cabinet. I am here tonight to apply for, and to be considered for the school board position vacancy. I have lived in this town for about 35 years. It's my home. I have dedicated my la, my life, the last 14 years, to serving on the school board. I desire to continue for the next two years. I have, how would I say? My daughter was a student in this school district, and I am beholden to them, to this district for educating her to be such a fine young person. In addition, there are many strengths that I will bring to this district's children, employees, and school board. Our children, teachers, staff, administrators, and parents deserve the respect, the dedication, and belief that together with our collective leadership, we can create continued success in all areas, which include academic improvement, expansion of dual enrollment, social-emotional supports, overall safety, parental engagement, the arts, world-class sports, before-and-after-school CAPS programs, professional development, grow our own programs, career and technical education, sustainability and expansion, modernization of facilities, community schools, wellness centers, updated technology, and improved communication service, et cetera. The assets that I bring are fivefold. 14 years of successful collegial board governance. 2, more than 35 years of educational expertise as a teacher of teachers. Probably have taught at least 90% of most of the B-class teachers in the district. 3, knowledge regarding budget allocations aligned with board and community visions and priorities. 4, local and statewide advocacy network. 5, 100% support of all our local community nonprofits to work in tandem with all our children and students. Thank you.
Thank you, and welcome. What do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the board's role in fulfilling that purpose? And how can the board be more transparent in fulfilling such purpose?
The traditional view of, on the purpose of public schools is to create an informed citizenry who can critically read about issues so that they will vote on them. I concur with this view, but I also have an expanded view of, to offer. As many of you know, I'm of a Gotskin, and I want to share that perspective briefly. In Russian, there are two, there are two words often used interchangeably to refer to education. They are vospatenia and obichania. Vospatenia expresses that the purpose of education is to continue the development of a child's personhood, to nurture them in their emotional, cognitive, and personal development. It's a continuation of the development that parents began for their children from infancy. Obichania means teaching, learning as one, which refers to the more academic function of school. This is to provide students with all the knowledge and tools that humankind has developed to help our species survive. This includes knowledge of languages, mathematics, biology, et cetera. And most importantly, it represents teaching, learning as a collaborative activity requiring the participation of both the teacher and the learner. Each is equal and contributes to the teaching, learning process. This view guided my decisions many times as a board member. I think that public board meetings already provide transparency to the community at large, that that is the purpose of making them public. However, I think that community members don't always get sufficient information about why such and such a program is selected for funding, or why a certain person was considered best for a given job. Once we vote on an agenda item, it is fait complete, and we don't always recall the reasons for why it was put on the agenda or how to directly address it. And it feel, and, and, and fills the needs of students or teachers. Perhaps a brief explanation of why an item is on the agenda along with the other information can be helpful for transparency. Thank you.
Evening. What would you like to accomplish as a member of the board?
In the next two years, number one, I would like us to seriously consider laying the foundation for implementing community schools. Two, establish building and trade pathways that would enhance the choices for our students so they can contribute to our local economy with viable jobs. Three, continued support for our social-emotional well-being for our students through our HARP programs, our youth court, et cetera. Supporting our teachers, our administrators, as well, and staff and parents through our social-emotional programs that we have. Four, continued investment and support of our academic achievement, MTSS model, and for, and to be sure that, for our students and our, also our teachers and administrators and professional development across the board. Five, hiring more classified workers to fill all the like vacancies that we have, and also hiring more community-based teachers. Lastly, which is really important, is streamlining and supporting our special education services for our children, students, teachers, school psychologists, and parents so that they can participate effectively in their children's education. Thank you.
All righty. Number three, Dr. Flores. What do you consider the top three budget priorities for the district? What factors led you to identify these priorities?
Many of the priorities I list are already being addressed thanks to the amazingly competent administrators and staff in our district. We must continue to address the social-emotional needs of teachers and students that resulted from the COVID pandemic. While volunteering with students and teachers in our classrooms, I have sensed a kind of free-floating anxiety that I attribute to the effects of COVID. I think two years of online classes has created uncertainty and anxiety amongst teachers and students because there has been a clear impact on academic achievement. Now, both are under pressure to improve, and that takes an emotional toll. As board members, we need to work with staff to find ways to mitigate the pressures and assure students that they will be successful and that we understand what they are going through, and it's going to be okay. Secondly, the second priority, budget priority, is academic achievement. And it has been seriously impacted. I placed it second because teachers and students need to feel socially, emotionally secure to engage in the hard work of academic achievement to make up for what has been lost due to COVID. However, San Bernardino City Unified School District is blessed to have one of the best instructional leaders in any district, Ms. Anna Applegate, who has presented several strong approaches for improving academic achievement. The multi-tiered system of support, MTSS, offers an exceptionally strong support system for addressing student achievement based on their level of need. To keep tabs on these needs, Ms. Applegate and her staff have developed multiple ways to assess progress and to plan for future implementation of successful strategies. Implementation is the key. And if we don't have the systems in place, we will not reach our goals. And we have to have trust by our, our teachers, our administrators, and belief in the process. Thirdly, family engagement is a vital, is very vital for student success. Just as teachers and students form a collaborative unit in a classroom, in classroom learning and teaching, so do family units provide overall support for students' continued development as a person and in academic achievement. Their direct involvement in the vospatenia and obichania processes at school are critical. They are critical because it is precisely where these two processes begin. Parents are the first teachers. They must be kept in the loop to ensure that their children continue to succeed. Thank you.
Please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
Thank you. The assets that I bring are fivefold. One, 14 years of successful collegial board governance. Two, more than 35 years of educational expertise as a teacher of teachers. Three, knowledge regarding budget allocations aligned with board and community vision and priorities. Four, local and statewide advocacy networks. And five, in 14 years, I have 100% record of support for our, for all our local community nonprofits that work in tandem with our children and our students. When I was board president, I led our board to invest in developing a five-year strategic plan with all our district and community partners. In addition, in 2011, with consensus of the board, we created the following board subcommittees. In addition, in 2011, with consensus of the board, we created the following board subcommittees: policy, budget, technology, curriculum and instruction, and the city bridge committee with additional ad hoc committees like facilities, transportation, and charter schools. These committees, the structural formation of these committees provided the board to be participatory in governing our district. Thank you.
Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about, and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
A recent board decision that is aligned with student and community needs was our collective decision to explore and begin to fund school site wellness and health centers. Under the direction of the board, Dr. Rodriguez, the cabinet, central staff, and site administrators have already begun to lay the foundations for expanding services that address the emotional and physical needs and health needs of our students, children, and families. One exemplary wellness health center is at Sierra High School, provides a highly effective model for the rest of us. As board members, we listen to students, our parents, who were members of the ICUC Youth and Parent Committees. And over time, we can, they conducted surveys that provided us support and feedback from the community. And as a result of these collective efforts, the board allocated more funding to hiring more nurses, health aides, and counselors at more school sites. We, as the board, are responsible for educating the whole child, vospatenia and obichania. My values and beliefs include establishing ways for caring for our whole child, and, and whether it includes social, emotional supports, health, and academic. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Please share any volunteer experiences that you have participated in that benefited, benefits students of our district.
Throughout my tenure as a school board member, and before when my daughter was a student in the district, I participated as a parent and volunteer at my daughter's school sites, as room mother on school site parent, teacher councils, and a district, district member committee. For example, during the Prop 202.7 era in nineteen ninety-seven, ninety-eight, the board appointed me as a representative to the bilingual committee that included district administrators and parents. This committee was instrumental in presenting and representing parents that advocated to keep our bilingual programs. Consequently, we were the only district in the inland empire not to eliminate bilingual education in this area. And the board listened to the parents, and I believe, Mr. Tillman, that you were part of the board then, and are responsible for us keeping our, our bilingual programs. I have also been a judge in both the African-American Spelling Bee and the Latino History Bee, and many other, and I also have been keynote at a lot of, a lot of school events that have invited me and to be on panels and be in parental meetings and so forth. And I could go on and on, but those are some of the ones that I have. And most recently, I also, I am teaching demonstration lessons in classrooms. I'd like to end with my closing statement. As stated in my prior opening statement and responses to all the other questions, I bring not only a breadth of experience, but also educational expertise, leadership, a statewide advocacy network, policy knowledge, and institutional history that will provide this board a continued voice of collegiality, joint leadership, mentorship, and a can-do and will-do spirit. Si se puede. I am a servant leader and will, to the best of my ability, meet all the responsibilities of the office of the school board member with dignity, respect, dedication, and honor to benefit our children, students, teachers, administrators, staff, parents, and community members. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Flores, for your time and for being here this evening, and for your desire to want to serve on the Samuel City Unified School District School Board once again.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to our next candidate and our last candidate for the evening, Mr. Michael Luis Santos. Welcome.
Thank you for having me here. Hope I can get through this. All right, so I'll start telling you a little bit about myself. I am Michael Santos. I guess that's, that's where we start. I kind of want, not kind of, I want to be a part of the board. Start, I have six children in the school district, right? I have children at the elementary, at, at North Verdumont, at Caesar Chavez Middle School, and at Cajon High School. So their future is important to me, their classmates' future is important to me, all of the students that are there. So I think I bring that perspective of, you know, I'm going to have children in, in the school district. I have a, my youngest one is in kindergarten, and my oldest, my two oldest are in tenth grade. Me, myself, I'm a product not of San Bernardino, but of South LA. I understand what education can do for you. I grew up in the foster care system many, 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 many years ago, but understood that high school, that's where, you know, I learned. High school for me became really important, so education became important, where, you know, I ended up at community college, and then in college. And what I do for a living now is promote college. I work for the University of Southern California in an outreach program where I work in South LA with low-income, first-gen students promoting higher education. You know, while I think all types of education are important, all types of career choices are extremely important because everyone, every child that we educate has a dream, has a goal, and again, I do promote higher education, but I also understand that it isn't for everyone. We need plumbers, we need nurses, we need all different types. And I, and I believe that the school board and, and the direction it sets and, and all the things, excuse me, that it does are important. And again, that's a little bit of my background, and we can start with the questions.
Thank you and welcome. The first question, what do you see as the basic purpose of public schools? What is the board's role in fulfilling that purpose, and how could the board be more transparent in fulfilling such purpose?
The basic is to set policy, right? Set policy that affects students first. Students, families, employees, and the community. The, the, the school board in this community is extremely important in the direction that education is going to go in, because you don't only set today, tomorrow, it's the future, however you plan that, five years away, six years away, ten years away. So the, the school board plays an extremely important role in setting the table for, for what's to come for all our students. And again, the students, parents, family members. I think the school board being more transparent, fulfilling its, its purpose is just being involved in the community, not just being a board member and showing up at board meetings, but also being involved within the schools, within the greater community, whatever that means for everyone. But I think that's how you become more transparent, because then you learn what the community needs and wants.
What would you like to accomplish as a member of the board?
You know, I, I thought of this question, and I was like, what would I like to accomplish? And I, honestly, I was, I was struggling with, with this, because what is it that I, when you're a member of a board, right? It's, it's a team effort on what you, you're accomplishing. The biggest thing, and, and I truly mean this, I think this school district, I haven't been here long, but I think it's doing a great job. As, as I said, I have six children who are in the school district, and I haven't been disappointed or haven't encountered anything where I've been disappointed with the school. So I think becoming, what I'd like to accomplish is continuing the great work and building upon that. For me, myself, is, I, I think if I become a board member, you know, everything from graduation, are we providing innovative education for students? Is everything that the board doing, or everything that I am doing within the board there to help students accomplish their dreams and their goals? And actually letting them see what they can accomplish.
All righty, number three. What do you consider the top three budget parties for the district? What factors led you to identify these priorities?
At the top three, I think teacher training, innovation. As students are coming into the school, and, you know, most of our students, if we, if we have children, you know, they love phones, they love technology. So using that to, to the advantage and expanding that, and seeing where the budget allows for, for, for training in teachers for that, and providing as much innovation to students. The continuation, I know I benefited as a parent from the sunrise and the CAPS program because I don't live close by, and making sure, I, I, if I remember correctly, I know it's funded for, for close to five years, but making sure that that continues, because in speaking to other parents, it has become such a great tool for allowing us to work and, and not have to worry about our kids, especially if you, if you have to commute. So finding, making sure that the, the funding for that, and maybe even being able to expand, because in some places, there, there are waiting lists. There's, there's parents who are taking advantage of something, and that benefits the child extremely, because as, in the CAPS where my, my children are, you know, they, they, they do homework, and they do a lot of those things with, with actual help, so I think it benefits students. Yeah, I think that, that's it.
Please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
Strengths. I think my ability to work with anyone is a strength. My ability to, I, I, I believe I'm resilient. I believe that I love working with anyone who can, I, I bring, I'm always wanting to know what the answer and what the solution is. I don't have to like the answer or the solution, but there is an answer and there is a solution. So I'm very solution-focused. We all have, there's always problems, issues that arise, but I don't always believe in just dwelling on what the issue is. How do we fix it? You know, how can we fix it? How do we make something better? If something's great, there's always room for improvements. So I, I think I bring that type of personality, again, a personality that my love, my wife loves about me. I, I forgive and forget really, really quickly. I don't take anything personal in anything that I do, because i- if we all have a mission, we're never going to always agree. We're not going to see the world the same. We have different backgrounds, different upbringing, so we, we're going to see things differently, but if we can find a common ground, and that's what a, a board should do, right? We find something and, and we try to improve it, or, or what is in, in the best interest of everyone. And I think I bring that. And, and again, I think I also bring the, the, I have kids at every level right now, and, and I will for, for, for a while. And I think that experience of, of seeing whatever this board does in action with my children, I, I bring that as well.
Identify a recent board decision that you felt strongly about, and describe how you would balance community concerns, student needs, federal law, staff considerations, and your personal values and beliefs to determine how to vote on the issue.
The one I chose is not really federal law, but the state law of changing the late start for, for the high school students. I think that was a decision that I think the, the board, if I was in the last SPAC meeting, I think it's, the high school is going to be eight fifty, I think, or eight thirty, somewhere in there. I may be misspeaking, sorry. But I think that was extremely important. That decision i- is a tough one because it affects parents, it affects the students, and that is a decision that, that, based on how the board changed it, I, I agree with all of the times there, that, that were there. I'm trying to recall the times, but I think that was a, a decision that I would have, again, because I know parents, sitting there with parents, why is the district changing the school times? It's affecting my commute, it's affecting how I pick up my middle schooler, my high schooler. But I think the board did a great job of communicating to parents why, one, it's state law, so it's, it's beyond the board's control. But also listening to parents. I, I've sat in meetings where, where parents voiced their concerns, and I think Dr. Funchess was communicating very well with, with, with parents on what was going to be done, but the, the board also took time to listen, do surveys, and, and really take parents' opinion in this, because that's who would, it truly affects our students and the children, but the parents are the ones who have to get them, who have to figure out the schedule. So that, that is a, an issue that I would have voted the way the, the board has voted so far.
Great, thank you so much. So my question is number six. Please share any volunteer experiences that you have participated in that benefited or benefits our students here in the district.
Okay. Well, when I first came to the district, I was on the school site council for Chavez Middle School for a couple of years. Caesar Chavez, Mr. Morales likes it, the full name. Caesar Chavez Middle School. I'm currently on the school site council for Cajon High School, and I'm also a, a member of the SPAC, the Superintendent Parent Advisory Board for Chavez Middle School. I, in the community, I'm, for my six-year-old, I, I'm learning how to be a coach for the first time. I have older children, but I've never had the opportunity to coach, so I'm going to be a coach for, for six-years-old in, in Little League. That's kind of my, what I've done in the, in the community and continue to do. And as I said, I've been here in the community about four years, so I'm continuing to grow. My wife and I want, are, are becoming more involved with the community, and doing other things that, that, that I think as we found our forever home in, in the city of San Bernardino and in the school district, and as I said, my children will be here till high school graduation, which for a couple of them is only a couple of years away. So that's what I've done in the community, and I plan, whether it's through the school board or through other things, to become even more involved, because again, this community matters to me, because it's, it's, it's what I, where I call home. And do I have a closing statement? Thank you for your time. I, getting, you know, I, I get nervous in front of people, so, but thank you very much for your time, and, and speaking to the wonderful eight people there. Anyone you pick, I mean, of course I want me, but anyone you pick, I think in having conversations, everyone really cares about the community. And again, for me, it's students first, and of course, everyone that comes with that, parents, employees, and everything. But if we, if, if the school board always provides for the students, everything will, will come through. And again, thank you very much for your, for your time.
Mr. Santos, thank you for your time as well, and for being here this evening, and for wanting to be a part of the Samuel City Unified School District School Board. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, folks, well, that concludes our, our interviews of our candidates, and, you know, I just want to go on to say thank you to all of our candidates this evening for being here, for taking the time out of your evening, away from your families. It takes a lot of courage to come up and give an interview in front of a lot of folks, and all the people that are watching us on YouTube as well, so I applaud you for your courage to do that. And our city is very, very fortunate to have such outstanding candidates that came before us this evening, and I encourage you to continue the work that you're doing. I get a little emotional about it, because just listening to all the work that all of you are doing is what's going to drive our city forward and make this city a better place for our children to live. And that's what we should be doing, is creating a safer, nicer, wonderful place to raise our children where they want to grow up and they want to stay. We can only select one of you. You have made our decision very difficult. I can tell you that right now. Like I said, you can only pick one, and with nine fantastic candidates, we have our work cut out for us, and I know we're going to do our very best to select a colleague that we believe will help us move this district forward, not just now, but in the future, and the best representatives in every way possible. So again, thank you to all of you for being here, and thank you for your families that have joined you, and for our community that's here as well, supporting you. So we will move on. Mr. Mobley, I will turn it over to you briefly, and then we're going to get started.
Well, I think you're to the point where you can give your personal observations about the candidates. I think you have an outstanding group from which to choose a board member to fulfill the remaining two years. the remaining two years. And so with that, Mr. Chair, you can go ahead and rotate. I don't know if you want to, what order that you want to take, but if board members, first of all, reflect and then maybe if there's a couple, two or three at the most that kind of stood out and again, staff will capture those names on the screen. There won't be any particular order, but it will give you an opportunity, opportunity as a group to reflect on the individuals. And then after that, you, someone may present a motion to name someone and the board can then consider a vote. It'll take four votes to make the appointment. So with that, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. President.
Mr. Mobley, thank you. And I need to correct myself because I'm so used to saying Samuel City, it's Samuel City and our city of Highland as well, which we represent. So I do apologize to our folks from the city of Highland. I get so fixated on Samuel City Unified School District School Board, but our cities. At this time, you know, I was going to start right to left to, you know, start our conversation, our comments, our deliberations, but I see Ms. Marian Grande Aviles turned her light on already and I just want to let you know, we are going to have discussion first about, you know, what we observed and what we heard and about our candidates. And then you can name one, two, or three candidates if you'd like. And then I'll move back over to Ms. Rosales Medina to get us going this way, so.
Oh, I was just going to ask President Wyatt, I just wanted to make a motion.
I appreciate that, but I would like us to go through the deliberation process.
Okay.
But thank you so much.
Yes.
I do appreciate that. All right, then we'll start with Ms. Rosales Medina.
My top three, but I do have to say there were so many that I haven't, I have, this is the first time meeting them. And those that have came forward as parents and being engaged in their school sites and just hearing them speak, just wanted to commend all those that came down to really express the work that they're doing at the school site. So I wanted to say thank you. But of course, I have Dr. Flores, I have Francesca Villarreal, and I have Alex Avila.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Ms. Aviles Grande, comments and maybe candidates?
Yes, I have candidates. I have, actually, I have two. I have, let's see. Felicia Alexander and Francisco Ramirez.
Thank you, Ms. Aviles Grande. I'll move over here to Vice President Tillman.
Well, first, I want to thank everyone for coming out. I mean, it's an amazing, the talent pool that we have here in our school district. So I really appreciate you all coming out. A lot of y'all ran for office, so I commend you on that. And whether people say it or not, you never lose when you run for office. You benefit yourself, but you also benefit the community. It makes a big difference to have people who want to step up to the plate and have the courage to go through what you have to go through in order to run a campaign. So I want to say I commend you all for that. We did have an election recently and that were, people were selected for the board during that election. And, you know, I want to make it clear because I know people like to interpret things outside of the election. And a lot of people told me, you know, I wasn't going to get reelected and they tell you that people tired of you being on there for 28 years, Dr. Rogers. But in the end, it's beautiful to let the people decide. And so there was an election, we had the results of the election and now people can interpret what that meant, but the bottom line is we had four people that got elected, three out of the election, and then one in the special election. And you can see the results, but that election is over. This process is to appoint someone for the two years remaining from the seat that was vacated by Dr. Rogers when she went and was successful to get elected to the County Superintendent Schools Board. That's it in a nutshell. We're appointing somebody for two years. Now, with that, for me, you know, when I hear people talk about what it is to be a board member, and I'll be honest with you, for the 28 years that I've been here, when I first went to CSBA, it made no sense to me when they said that the board member's job is to create policy. To this day, it doesn't make any sense to me. I understand we make policy, that's one portion of being a board member. There's a whole world of other things that we do. And for me, the most important thing is to ensure that what we say in the policy, what we say as a board is reality. And that is difficult to do because we make decisions here that have to take effect in classrooms and on school sites. And that doesn't always happen. So for me, as a board member, when I get that phone call and they say, you said you have a CAPS program and my child will be, should be able to participate and there isn't a waiting list, but I just got told by your school site that my kids can't participate because there is a waiting list. Then it's my job to make the phone calls to say what the board said isn't happening and what do we need to do to ensure that it does happen? And every day I get phone calls of that type that impact parents and students and employees day in and day out. And I love being here to make sure that we fix those problems because I feel that is the role of the board to ensure that this district has integrity and what we say, we mean, and we make sure that it comes to fruition. Now, and because of that, my number one pick is Dr. Flores because I know for a fact she does that. She does it to a point where she gets on a whole lot of folks' nerves sometimes, but in the end, she's doing it to benefit students and kids and parents. And she meets people where they're at, at all different days and times that she has the experience in doing it. So she's number one. My second person would be Ms. Felicia Alexander. I've known her for a number of years. I watched her work in the community. I think she'd be great also. And my last person would be Ms. Francesca Villarreal. She has students in the district. You could just sense the passion that she has about our district and our kids. She, her responses to the questions, I thought were right on point. So those are my three people. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Tillman. Ms. Sabios.
Thank you. First of all, I also want to, you know, thank everyone for coming out. It's not an easy thing to do. I still get nervous every time I have to speak, so I can only imagine I didn't get to do that process. I, you know, ran, but I honestly don't know if I would have been able to do that. So thank you so much for coming out. So for me, there's, obviously, every single candidate has so much to offer and I concur with Dr. Wyatt. You've made this decision extremely difficult. We've heard public comments, you know, and so forth. My, I'm going to add a fourth person because it's just, it's so difficult. But for me, my first pick is going to be Mr. Ramirez. And that's because I appreciate parents. I appreciate parents and I appreciate his passion. I appreciate his involvement. And I also appreciate the fact of, you know, I identify, I don't come from a background where my parents are educated. So I recognize the double challenge that that has, you know, that, what that comes with. And to, you know, have you come up here and, you know, speak and share openly the fact that, you know, you were a student on an IEP and all of those other things, to me, I truly value that and I commend you for that. So that's the reason why, on top of being a parent in the district. My number two would also be Ms. Felicia for the same reasons, you know, active person in the, in the community, you know, has also no longer children or not children in the district, but also has grandchildren in the district, you know, involved in the community as well. My third pick is going to be Mr. Michael Luis Santos for the same reasons. I appreciate parents coming forward. Sometimes it's a different feel. You get information differently. And so again, I truly appreciate that and truly value that. The fact that you have not been raised in this community, to me, brings value to that, you know, being able to see other perspectives as well. And so that's the reason why I'm picking him. And then my fourth one is Mr. Michael Rivera. You know, also having that perspective of an attorney, I'm sure that there's, you know, value and wonderful things and could be a great addition to our board as well. So those are my top four.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. Ms. Chahuski.
Thank you. First, thank you to everyone who came out tonight, those who are here in support and stayed and watched the proceedings and supported their candidates. To the candidates for stepping up and applying and standing in front of us today. It's not easy. In some ways, I think it might be more difficult than running for election because at least you're kind of home or, you know, with some friends when you're trying to figure out what's going to happen. And I know I'm nervous, so I know I can feel, you know, how you guys are feeling out there today. But you all, like, we are so blessed to have all of you in our community. And even if you aren't selected today, I hope that you will continue to help and participate and give us, you know, all of your expertise because it's what makes our community great and our ability to work together. I didn't rank like one, two, three, four. I just sort of did them in the order that I, that they interviewed. And then when I realized people were ranking, I'm like, okay, it's too late for me to try to figure that out. So this is in the order that they, they interviewed that I, that I, that they're, you know, rather than one, two, three. Michael Rivera, Felicia Alexander, and Barbara Flores.
Thank you, Ms. Chahuski. And thank you to my colleagues for actually being very brief. Sometimes we talk a lot, so I'm going to take all your minutes. Just kidding, no. First of all, I want to start that I have a vision of our city, a unified San Bernardino. So I want to start with that. And what do I mean by that? I mean, this school board, our district, working closely with our city council, with our new mayor, with our local legislators, both county, state, and the federal level. I've been seeing that lately and that gives me hope. I want to say that. It really does inspire me and it really lets me know that this city is on the brink of moving forward and doing great things. Thank you for saying that. But our city has also been fractured. We've had a lot of hurt here as well. And I think we need to overcome that as a unified city. And that's going to be difficult to do because some of those wounds are very deep. But the only way we're going to move our city forward is by healing those wounds together and moving forward. We have a lot of new leadership in place, which I think is pivotal as well. But at the same time, we need experience to lead those new leaders and to guide those new leaders when they have questions. So I take that into consideration. Forgot my glasses because I wrote kind of small. What I truly believe is our city definitely, not our state, but our district and our city, we need transparency. We need accountability. I will say this, we don't need politics in education. Even now, people say I'm a politician. It's hard to hear that sometimes. Oh, you're a politician now. And I did not get into this for politics. I got in this to make a difference for our kids, number one, to make our schools a better place for our kids, and then of course, to create a better city and greater community. The level of accountability has not been as high as it needs to be. So that is definitely at the top of my list is for holding us as a board accountable and then our one employee that we have. That is something we have to understand as well. We have one employee, the superintendent. And I think we often lose sight and focus on that. What I'm not looking for is the most polished person, the most experienced person, the most educated person. But what I did see tonight is a lot of love and a lot of passion, which all of you possess. And that there, again, I applaud you on. I'm looking for a team player, someone who's transparent, someone who's ethical, someone who's going to do the right thing when no one's looking. We often say that's the definition of character. Are we going to do business out in front of everybody up here? Are we going to do business behind closed doors or on the side? To me, that's important as well because we need to be a unified board as we work together on a common agenda, not in silos with personal agendas. So with that in mind, I'm kind of like Ms. Chahuski. I will go down the list in no particular order and folks, please forgive me because a lot of you made my list, but I had to narrow it down to three, which has been very difficult for me. I'll start with Michael Rivera, Felicia Alexander, and Dr. Barbara Flores. And those are my three. So now, boy, we got some lights on and, you know, I was going to say, do we want to entertain more conversation, but I think we're good.
And to be fair, Mrs. Grande had her light on first to do a motion, so I will defer to her. She did beat me and...
Danny, that's more than kind of you and quite a gentleman. I'm, I'm...
She had her light on first to make a motion, so.
I would not have complained.
All right. Well, Ms. Tillman, thank you for going to Ms. Aviles Grande. Ms. Grande, do you have a motion?
I have a motion. President Wyatt, may I make it? All right. I move to appoint Felicia Alexander to the San Bernardino City Unified School Board of Education.
You have a motion?
I second that motion.
We have a motion and we have a second on the floor. All right, I was going to ask for discussion, but I'm looking to see if lights are on. Is there any discussion on the motion and the second? Ms. Rosales Medina.
I do. So for me, it's, and I know we want to work together with the city, but I think for me, the concern is, you know, when we have couples, both in the city and in the school board, we have to make sure that, because I've seen this happen in other cases, not that I'm saying that this would happen here, is that then it becomes a power struggle and then how to, you know, ensure that we don't move into that direction. And I trust that the system, we won't, but that's always been my concern when we have couples, you know, both city and school board or, you know, both running for political power or so forth. So that's just always been my concern.
Thank you, Ms. Rosales Medina. Any other comments by my colleagues? Ms. Sabios?
I just want to acknowledge, you know, and I guess validate Ms. Medina's concern. And I want to add to that, any person on this board or city council board is one person and one vote. So regardless of, you know, whether people are related or married, it doesn't give them any more power on the board because there's still just one person and one vote. So I do want to, I guess, you know, kind of speak to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sabios. Vice President Tillman.
After this vote, because I gave up my like to Ms. Grande, I'd like to have the, if Ms. Felicia Alexander doesn't get voted in, be able to make the motion for the next person.
Well, anytime, I think you noticed, Vice President Tillman, if there isn't a majority consensus on a candidate, and at this time, it's Ms. Felicia Alexander, then we would move on to a secondary motion and then a tertiary and fourth and fifth if we have to. All right. And then for me, I just wanted to make sure I had clarification on my comments that I was not meaning that a school board member and a city council member being together in the family, in the city, but definitely for us just to work closely with our local governments. And I have actually worked with folks that have been elected couples, which in most cases has been nice, but there couldn't be, I could see what you were saying, a concern as well. So definitely, your point is taken and, Ms. Sabios, I think you made a very good point that we are one of seven in regards to our vote, but I do consider us a board. But you're right, when it takes action... But you're right, when it takes action, obviously, it takes a majority of us. So thank you. Are there any other comments? All right, let's go ahead and vote. And a yea would be for yes, for appointing, and nay would be for no. Just want to make sure I clarify that. All right, we have four yays and two nays. So at this time, I'm going to congratulate Ms. Felicia Alexander as our next Samuel City Unified School District Board Member. Congratulations.
I was just going to, if she didn't win, I just wanted to give Dr. Flores a chance. And I was going to go ahead and come back to Felicia. But congratulations, Mrs. Alexander.
Yes, and thank you again to everyone, and thank you for, Mr. Tillman, for saying that as well. So I will have a motion to adjourn.
Move to adjourn.
Second.
All right. Thank you, everyone.